All right, thank you for all coming and welcome to the Wareham Zonic Board of Appeals. Tonight's agenda is for November 10, 2021, and it's 6:34 PM. And we are at room 320 at the Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I want to call the meeting to order. My far-right associate member, Mr. Chris Conti, regular member, Mrs. Veronica Devenese, our clerk, Mr. Jim Akabachi, regular member, Mr. Richard Sample to my left, and myself, the chairman, Nazee Al Kalasi. Also present is independent town council, P E and L, uh, is it LPR, LCR? Okay, Mr. Charles Rowley and our town planner, Mr. Ken Buckland and his assistant, Aaron Shaheen, right? Okay, very well. We have some preliminary business to do.
And Jacob will not be here this evening.
Yes, Jacob will not be here this evening. I just got to look at my book, what's as what, so we make sure we're in compliance. On 2-21 TGCI Manica, is anyone here from TGCI Manica?
I have Mark Bobrowski on the phone.
All right. Well, we don't need him on the phone. Here's the deal, TGCI Manica, if you guys recall, this is the 20 units 4EB for sale. They did on Hadid Bay with Red Brook Road. And they, it was for sale, 25% for affordable, and now they want to change it to all rental. So here's the options. If the board feels rental is more detrimental or it's a major
A substantial change.
Substantial change, so it needs, he needs to reopen the public hearing. So we'll have to say it's substantial change and it's a major modification. If not, we could say it's a minor modification and we could vote on it, say yes or no. There's two things. On the 4EB, if he goes all rental, it will all counted through our stock, rental stock to that 10%, which is another 15 units, not much of a deal, big deal. But anyway, if these company in Manica go out, builds them right now, which they can, and rents them out, can't really do much about it. If we say no, deny it and goes to housing, we all know what the answer is. Most likely, they get a big grant for rental and big like discount on the interest and all that. So I don't know what you, what you guys wish to do, if you believe it's a major or minor. Chris?
I, I'd like to say that I looked up on the laws, 760 CMR Department of Housing and Community Development. I think it's 56.07C, it says the following matters generally would be substantial changes, a change from one form of housing tenure to another. So I would say it falls into that category, so I would say it's a substantial change.
Okay. Veronica?
I would agree with Chris. I think it's a substantial change.
Okay. Jimmy?
I have, I have mixed emotions on this. I absolutely do feel as though it's a significant or substantial change. However, I'm also very well aware that no matter how we vote with the right attorney, they're going to get their way. So other than making them bleed a little bit, we're kind of, the best word I can use is screwed. I don't like it. I want to send a strong message to the applicant that I don't like it. I will say to the applicant that I won't vote to defeat it, but I don't like it. I do find it to be a major change. My question would be to the applicant and to the board, to the rest of my board, anybody that can answer this question. We changed this from a for-sale development to a rental development. Does that preclude any future sale of these units? I personally would much rather see these units remain as for-sale units. Again, reiterating the fact that I believe pride of ownership reflects a much better value for a neighborhood than a rental development. So I personally would like to see this remain a for-sale development. And in the event that because the prices are ridiculous or the market doesn't bear it, they can't be sold, then certainly they would be allowed to rent the units. I just would find that a little bit more palatable, rather than feel like a goose that's being made to generate pate foie gras. In other words, it's being jammed down my throat.
All right.
That's my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Richard?
I think it's a major.
Okay, very well. Okay, let's take a vote.
If you do vote it as a substantial change, you're going to have to hold a public hearing within 30 days.
Can I elaborate on that a bit, Ken?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mark Bobrowski for the applicant. The HIC regulations also say that within 20 days, I have the right to appeal the decision that it's substantial directly to the Housing Appeals Committee. Or in the alternative, I can basically reserve my rights to go to the Housing Appeals Committee. I don't disagree with the gentleman who recited the HIC regulations, that the change in the tenure of ownership is a substantial change. I think that that's to protect towns in a reverse situation where a project starts as a rental and it wants to convert to for-sale. You can well imagine having signed off on a project and anticipating that you would get 100% of the units to count, backing off to 25% would be a very distasteful thing for a municipality. Here, we're going in the opposite direction, so please don't exalt form over substance in the regulations. I don't think the regulations anticipate that a for-sale project is going to go to a rental project. I, I think if there's a disagreement about whether this is an ideal location for rental, that's fair, but I think what my client wants to do is have a portfolio of rental units. The difference between rental and homeownership in terms of the character of the neighborhood is entirely dependent upon the capabilities of the management company. So the right management company is going to do as good a job as homeowners will do individually with their units. And I would urge you to consider that before you make your decision. Thank you.
To add to that, apparently Dakota Partners across the street with the Woodland Cove Project has purchased the site. Go ahead.
Oh, they bought across the street, bought it?
Yeah.
So the 150 units that are going in across the street are now 150 units and this 20?
That's right.
All right, I, I think, thank you, thank you, Counselor. So let's, let's take a vote. So make, can you make a motion, Jim?
Yeah, I, we've already closed the public portion of this hearing, correct? So we don't need to close the public portion.
Why don't you close it, just to be safe?
All right, I, I move to close. Any further input from, from the public or the applicant?
It's not really a public hearing, ma'am. All right, you're closing it, that means it's still open. And we just, there were some of us here who did not object to it when it was for sale, but now it's going to be rental.
All right, let me, okay, give me one second.
I think if we let them all vent for a minute apiece and don't let it go too long, nobody's going to, nobody's going to be harmed.
It's not a public hearing, though.
It's not a public hearing?
Voting whether or not you should take it to a public hearing?
We'd have to vote it back, we'd have to reopen it?
You have to reopen a public hearing to address the substantial change.
Right, if, if the, ma'am, if the board says it's a major substantial change, going to be from scratch, and you guys will have your chance to come back and speak, but right now, you can't, it's, it's not a public hearing, it's just, it's just a board decision, quick decision, nothing major. Well, I hope. So Jimmy, just close it. Do I have a second closing that?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. So 2-21 TGCI in Manica, LLC's closed wishes.
I'm willing to make a motion, but I'm not sure it's going to carry. I'll move that this be treated as a minor modification.
Okay, we have a motion by Jim as a minor. Do I have a second? Okay, no second, it's lost. Another motion.
Oh, then I, then I move that we treat it as a major substantial.
Substantial change and major modification. Okay, do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain.
Abstaining.
Okay, 4-1, opposed?
4-0-1.
4-0-1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will work with Ken to set up a hearing date within 30 days.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your opportunity to do that.
Thank you. All right, because we jammed to the weather last time, we want to make a quick decision on having a meeting on December 15.
Before we jump to the next one, just for the people that are in the room, just so that they know.
Yeah.
Just to reiterate, for all the people that are concerned and thought that it was a point of order, the board has voted that this is a major change, this will be brought back before the board. If you're sitting here for this, for that only, I mean, you're more than welcome to stay, but if this was the only reason you were here, have a good night.
And you will be notified in mail and in the paper to come back to the public hearing. So it'll be from scratch, public hearing, unless they decide to build it as a sale. All right, we move forward to
Number two.
Number two for December 15 meeting. What do you guys think, because we, we're going to be jammed?
So what is December 15th?
To add, to add, because we're not going to have Thanksgiving, we're not going to have Christmas, and we look at our agendas, we have a lot of hearings, so we're going to have one at 8:00 and one on the 15th.
Two weeks in a row, is that the gig?
Yes.
Let's make this easy. I make a motion that we hold a meeting, an out-of-scheduled meeting on December 15, 2021.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain.
Deny, nay.
Denied?
Nay.
Okay, so 4-1-0.
4-1-0.
I just, I signed up for a class that evening, that's why.
The wedding.
Yeah, for, for special permission for answers.
That's fine. Okay, very well.
I think, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm also, I believe I'm signed up for that, too.
Ken, can those be viewed after, those classes, aren't they recorded?
They are recorded. I don't know what the accessibility of two of them is.
We still have four remaining members if we can all be present.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't bet on that. Let's, let's resend our vote. I wouldn't bet on it, it's going to happen. And for a lot of applicants would choose not to open before, so we just waste our time. Let's resend the vote.
So let's, let's recant it. Do we need to make a motion to do that?
Yeah, yeah.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. And regarding December 15, we're just not going to vote, we're not going to take actions.
That's a Wednesday, correct?
Yeah. So that's, that's dead. All right, we go with the continued public hearing. 39-20 Hartford Realty Corp., special permit variance site plan review, 3005-3013 Cranberry Highway, and that is rain car wash. And that's hot. I'm going crazy.
Yeah, yeah. We got a, we got a, this is rain car wash.
All right, let me check.
This is for you and me to share. You guys don't have a plastic thing between you, can you share this?
Might be some of the same stuff I already have.
Oh, okay, let's see.
Just a little bit of information.
Print it up a bunch of stuff.
Okay. Very well. Just you name an address, gentlemen, for the record, and I just want to make some clarification for the night and some announcement, but I need your name and address for the record first.
Excuse me, good evening. My name is Doug Troyer, I represent the applicant, First Hartford Realty. My address is 859 Willers Street, Quincy, Mass.
Okay, and sir?
I'm Curtis Quitz, I'm with VHB, Cedar Street in Providence.
Okay, and sir?
Matt Keely, also with VHB, Walnut Street in Watertown.
Okay. We do, at the town of Wareham, we do, we have adopted the Mullen Rule, so I'm going to ask Mr. Devenese if she had the chance to review the minutes or the tape, and she could swear she could be fair, and to jump in back in the vote, she only missed one hearing. Mr. Veronica, are you okay with this?
I am.
Okay, very well. And for the record, I'm, I'm looking backwards, since we opened this in October. Start in October
August, actually. August 11th was the first day.
August 11th was the first?
October 13th was the second day.
August 11th, you sure?
Yes.
Yes. August 11, 2021.
Oh, okay.
Right here, first one.
All right, I have it, 39-21, that's a 39-20. Okay, from day one, Mr. Conti was here, and then in September 8, Mr. Conti was present, as well as Mr. Sample. Also, in September 22nd, they were both present. And also on October 13, they were both present, present. So Mr. Conti tonight will take the chair of Mr. Morris, and that's not here, so he will take that vote.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Okay, where did we leave it last time? And let's proceed.
Great. So just kind of a recap of where we were last time. So we were before you on October 13th. At the last hearing, we discussed the application for variance, which was filed prior to that time period. The board had taken that under consideration and wanted to wait until the close of the public hearing, and also render a decision on both the site plan, special permit, and variance altogether. We also had continued discussion on the application for the special permit and site plan approval. At the last hearing, the board requested that the fire department, asked us to reach out to the fire department to provide comment concerning whether they are okay with the revised fire access plan. We reached out to the fire department subsequent to that hearing, and on October 21st, the fire department provided a letter confirming that they are satisfied with the revised plan. That letter was submitted to the board, and I actually have a photograph of that letter that I'm placing up here at this time for the record. We believe that the fire access plan has been reviewed by the fire department, and the fire department has indicated that they are in agreement with that, and that's what this letter's submission is identifying. The board also, we had some discussion about whether the landscape buffer can be included within the stormwater drainage area. It's our position that that issue was resolved, that it can be. I believe that conversations with the board and with Mr. Buckland and with the building inspector, it has been indicated that the landscape buffer can actually be included in a stormwater drainage area. Board also requested that we look at additional, adding some additional plantings and infiltration basins, excuse me, additional plantings within the infiltration basins. We took a look at our revised landscape plan, and we revised our landscape plan and provided on October 27th, a revised plan. VHB Kurt will discuss what those additional plantings look like. Additionally, the board requested that we have, there was discussion about having the construction entrance moved off of Cranberry Highway to be to the rear of the site. I'm happy to say that we have obtained the necessary access agreements with Ocean State Job and are fine with the condition being put in that the temporary construction access be to the rear instead of off of Cranberry Highway. The board also asked us that we perform certain test pits at the site concerning the stormwater management system. Subsequent to that hearing, we moved mountains to basically have our engineering go out and provide those test pits. I believe that Mr. Rowley was present for some of those pits as well. We provided our results on October 27th, and VHB will be here tonight to answer any questions and discuss those results further. That's basically where we were, that's where we left off. We believe that we have provided the additional information to the board that it was looking for at the last hearing. We believe that we are in a position to move forward, but before we go there, I'd like to hand it off to Kurt from VHB to kind of go over the updated landscaping plan, as well as provide some more detailed information on those test pits in which we conducted. Thank you.
Do you have a, do you have the plan? Are you going to put up the landscape plan?
Yes.
Okay, so we, we took the, we took the board's request to the landscape architect and asked him to look at the basins and, and recommend appropriate plantings. And we added approximately 60 plantings in the basins along the edges in the plantable area, and these are a combination of evergreen trees and shrubs. Some, some eastern red cedar, some hummingbird summersweet, some arctic fire red twig dogwood, and red sprite winter berry are the, the species. It was part of the same palette of plants, I believe, that were proposed on the site, but now you have 60 more of them than we had before. With respect to the soils testing program, we are pleased to report that we conducted two test pits in each of the infiltration basins as recommended by DEP and in accordance with the request of, of the board's peer review consultant, Mr. Rowley. And, and essentially, the test pits confirmed what, the information that we were using for the borings.
Yep.
I don't think there were any particular surprises, that we did come up with, one of the holes did show some organics, which happened to be in one of the planter areas that are on the site, so we're, we're expecting that that's what that was. And, and in follow-up correspondence with Mr. Rowley, we've agreed that when the, when the basins are constructed, the organic material would be removed out and we'd replace that with sand, which was what we said we would do in our memo at that time as well. So I think we have closure on the question of whether or not, you know, do we, are we confident what we're using for groundwater? And, and I think we are. So from our perspective, we don't, we're not aware of any, any further comments from Mr. Rowley on this?
Okay, very well. Before I go to the board, Charlie, everything's been addressed? Do you have anything you want to address?
No, no, I think the only, the things that were outstanding before have been addressed. There were two pits that I, that I observed out back that had fill material in them. So every one of these areas, we should at least observe during the construction that between where the bottom of the infiltration area is going to be and an area below that, that there isn't some sort of a barrier because of fill material or something that's not suitable. So essentially, if, my recommendation was that they put a note to that effect on the plan, and at the time of construction, we'll take a look at it, and if we observe any of this unsuitable material, we'll just excavate out a little deeper to make sure that we've covered it all, and when we find the bottom of it, we'll make sure it gets taken out and replaced. The other, other condition of my suggestion was that any material that does have to come out, that the clean material should be taken down to an elevation equal to the good material that's underneath. That's basically the sand that we found at the bottom of the test pits, and would be the same material that was found in the borings. So again, the soils conditions are not necessarily changed, but we did find that there was some material that does need removal, and we'll just take it when we see it and, and excavate it out and replace it. So I think we're good.
All right, so they could dig it and replace it?
The groundwater, groundwater situation was confirmed, so I have no objection to that.
All right, very good. So that being said, I want to start by Chris. What do you think, Chris?
On the, on the plan, how are you going to handle a snow removal on the, on the lot?
So I, I would, I would say that snow removal will be like pretty much any commercial property where it gets pushed to the outside, and in the, in the event that it needs to be piled somewhere, the owner will select which parking spaces they, of those, probably the vacuum spaces, that they would pile and temp, you know, and wait for the snow to melt. If they get to the point where it's unmanageable, they'd have to remove it.
Now, you have, looks like three bays going in there, right? Or three aisles for cars to pull in?
Yes, sir.
Now, is each, each aisle's, what, is there one cash, one credit, and one something else, or do they all take the same payment? I guess my concern is, I'm afraid that one credit aisle will get piled up more than one of the others and lead to a blockage on the road.
Yes, we can, actually. For operations, I'd like to have Ari Hassiotis answer that question.
Hi, thank you. Have I been appropriately identified?
Yes.
Welcome. So first, on the snow removal, I'd also add that
Can you, I, just you name an address.
Yes, Ari Hassiotis with Universal Property Management, and we're ultimately sponsoring the project. On the snow removal, the other thing I would add is that there actually is a radiant heat in the ground, really, and from the pay lanes right into the tunnel, and then for really the entire exit of the tunnel, so that we won't really accumulate any snow, any, anywhere really on the north, the east, or sorry, the north, the west, and then the east side of the building, because that is kept heated to prevent any snow or ice buildup. So I just add that as an additional point of clarification. But with regard to the pay lanes, there are three, there are, and it is possible to use cash or credit at either of the first two closest to the building. And then the exterior lane is just for what we call unlimited members that are on a plan that can access the facility. Really, they pay a monthly fee and they can use the, the facility as often as they wish. But there are two of the three lanes that have full availability for cash and for credit.
If the, those two lanes get filled, can that third lane be opened up for cash and credit, or no?
We, we could, I'm not sure if we plan to put a, a payment kiosk there, but the, the general finding is that with the two lanes we have with the cash and credit, we should be able to satisfy it, but I don't know if we've looked at, there is going to be a kiosk on the far end as well, so that, that would give us the ability to do it there as, as well if necessary.
Thanks, thank you. One, one more thing, there is some talk about the construction entrance to the rear, has that, has that been satisfied?
Yeah, as I indicated in my opening comments, that was something in which we heard from the board at the last hearing, and we were able to obtain access agreements that would allow us to, to move that from Cranberry Highway to the rear for the temporary construction access.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I just comment on that for a second? The plan showed the construction entrance to the left of that first rear entrance shown on the plan that's on the screen. So it'll put that construction entrance at the, at the beginning of the proposed drainage area.
Okay.
The other plan, where that entrance is right now, the construction entrance was to the left of that. My comment in the letter which I wrote to the board was that they move it over so that it's part of the proposed finished entrance. And when they get to the point of actually doing the paving, they can remove the material that would be used for the construction entrance and do the paving, and it won't interfere with the construction of the drainage area.
So we'll move it to the far right towards
No, no. Do you see the, do you see the driveway that is on the left, on the bottom of the picture, right there?
Yeah, yeah.
The construction entrance was shown on the plan to the left of that, which put it right in line, no, not in the front, in the back.
Hold on, I'm trying to
In the back.
Manipulate this laptop, I apologize.
Yeah.
Just move your cursor to the left a little bit.
Left, okay.
Yeah, it was shown right in there, which interferes with the development of the drainage area. If the construction entrance were put over into the proposed finished driveway entrance, you could use it that way until you get to the point of needing to pave it and remove the stone and do your finished paving, and you'd be done with it. In the meantime, you've got the drainage area built, constructed, and it should
In the meantime, you've got the drainage area built, constructed, and it should be done anyway before you do any paving, so there's a place for the runoff to go.
You guys have an objection for that?
I think we have just one quick...
Not necessarily an objection. The soil and erosion control plan shows that the construction access at the rear at a location, ultimately, it's going to be the decision of a contractor who's actually building the thing. We're not the builders of it. And if they decide they want to move that, that construction entrance over and do the basin before the pavement, or the pavement before the basin, we don't, we don't really know.
Well, I would insist that the basin be done before you do any paving, because it's got to be the receiver for your runoff. You can't build a basin after you pave it.
I can't say I disagree with that, I just, I don't...
Mr. Rowley, are you suggesting that the construction access, temporary construction access be in this area of where the driveway is being depicted?
Exactly.
That's what he's asking.
Exactly.
That's not a problem, I just was pointing out the fact that...
That's fine, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
It's flexible, it should be flexible.
Yeah, I don't think it matters.
Okay.
All right, very well. Anything else, Charlie?
No.
Okay, okay, Veronica?
The last time that I was present and able to go back and forth, there was a lot of talk about lights in the car wash. I don't, I never heard the conclusion for the distraction of traffic, and there was, that seemed to be an issue at that initial meeting. Charlie, does anybody know, where did we leave that?
I think the response, if I can respond to that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The response was that there wouldn't be any flashing lights outside the building, but the zoning bylaw says that you cannot have any flashing lights outside the building anyway.
Right.
It's not allowed. I don't know that it's been made clear what sort of lighting arrangements may be inside the building, in the aisles where the washing takes place, whether that's steady lighting, whether that's flashing or not. I had made the comment that I was concerned about people being affected by flashing lights, especially if they were strobes and they were sitting in their car in the middle of a wash area. So perhaps that could be clarified, but you cannot have flashing lights that are running outside of the structure.
I don't believe, you guys have a lighting plan, there's no outside flashing lights, right? It's inside with the wax with...
Yeah, but there's also no strobes or flashing lights. It's lights that go on for when a customer selects a type of, type of wash, that light will go on, on and off. It's not flashing lights, there's no strobes...
Like you go wax, it goes yellow.
Yes, there's no flashing...
Rain guard, it goes blue, sun, rain, whatever.
Right, we are in compliance with the bylaw, we are not...
That's inside the building.
Yes, and there is no flashing lights. There is lighting on the inside of the building, but it's not flashing. There, I know that there was concern of strobe lights that was...
Oh, psychic glow at car wash?
Yeah, no, nothing along those lines. I know that there was an opposite, someone from opposition was indicating that there was a concern about strobes, flashing lights, that is not the case here.
I think the concern for me was, so I understand that the bylaw is that there are no exterior flashing lights, however, with an entirely glass front, I think exterior and interior gets a little muddled. It's inside the building, but when you have clear glass, it might as well be on the outside. So that's why I wanted some clarification on what the effect was going to be to traffic or people on the outside.
If you want.
Chairman, may I say something? We do have another car wash down the road that has a big, huge sign. It's got flashing lights, it moves, it does all kinds of light things on the sign. I mean, is there a reason why he can have a big sign and they can't have like suggestive lights? I know they're not flashing, they're not strobing, they're not causing any damage to anybody that could have an epileptic seizure or anything, because they're not flashing, so. I'm just curious, this place can't have bright lights, but the guy down the road can have a big, huge sign that's in his parking lot and lights all over the place? I mean, how, are we splitting hairs? That's all I'm asking.
Bottom line, bottom line, it's not what the other person has, it's what the laws are. And I'm sure they have a lighting plan for outside, and I've been to car washes many times, we have to be fair, and I say, I mean, you'll see yellow, you'll see blue, and it's not the bright, big spotlights that you could see 50 feet away, it's inside the building. But then again, that's my opinion.
I tried to Google rain car washes, if I could see one that was similar, that was in operation, so I could kind of get a feel for what it was going to look like. Couldn't find any, but I, maybe I didn't search hard enough. So that was the only thing that was still in my mind, because I hadn't heard what the discussion had been about that. Apparently, there wasn't any other, further discussion, that was kind of dropped.
Yeah, absolutely. I think Mr. Hasiotis would like to respond to that, if that's possible.
The only thing I might add is, the equipment we're using is not proprietary, it's very much off-the-shelf equipment, so, and frankly, very similar to the other car wash in town. So the lighting isn't different on the inside, we're not strobing any lights at all inside, and although you can't find a video of a rain car wash, because this would be one of the first that we build, it's the same, if you've Googled any car wash and saw any of the videos of a car going through a car wash, it's going to be the exact same experience inside. So, you know, it's, I would just try to reiterate that it's standard equipment. I wish we had something different, but we don't. We use the same equipment that everybody else does. We think we do it in a nicer building and hopefully with a much cleaner facility and very friendly folks working there every day, but it's really the same equipment, and the videos would be similar to what you might find otherwise online for the car washes that are operating throughout the U.S.
Okay. I was under the impression that this was a change, so that's enlightening. The other comment that I just wanted to make was not necessarily only regarding this project, but the variance in terms of the setback. I think that's pretty much going to be a precedent along the whole corridor because of the taking, so.
What's going to be precedent?
Well, the variance, that they're looking for, the setback variance...
So you think other projects...
Not the setback, the buffer, I'm sorry, the buffer.
You think other projects are going to...
Sure.
We'll deal with it when it comes through.
I do.
All right, Jimmy?
No comments, no questions.
Rich?
No.
None at this time.
Okay, very well. I want to move the audience, the public, is there anyone in favor first? And just for the record, Mr. Selectman Alan Slavin had asked me, he has a meeting with the Finance Committee, he asked me to say he's in favor of this project, just for the records. Okay, I see none, okay, who's opposing? Counselor, want to come forward?
Do we need to move? Yeah, why don't you...
Can somebody give the lady a chair?
Absolutely.
All right, have a seat, please.
I'm Mr. Chairman, Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street, Wareham. So are we being timed? I'm not sure if we're having five minutes or being able to kind of openly discuss things.
I mean, as quick as you can, we have a long night.
Got it. Okay, so...
Let me ask you, before you start, what did you, how did you make out with the, that traffic study you were gonna...
Thank you. So we did submit, which you should have in your packets, on the eighth, a couple of different reports. So one of them being a traffic study, and I'm glad we brought up some of the nuances regarding the system that the applicant is talking about, because in one of the footnotes of the traffic review, there's YouTube links. So I think if you go online, you'll be able to click on that, and you'll be able to see the system that they're speaking of. And I would argue that is different, we've been talking, it's already been brought up, the other car wash in town which I represent, it's a different system. So you can take a look at those videos that are on that footnote, I think it's on the third page, if you want to take a look at actually how the system works, because it's a different arc and with the light coming in. So I think that's a good video to take a look at. The relevance of that, just going into further opposition, is the traffic and the actual amount of vehicles that are going to go in this site. So I'd like to be able to talk to that first, I don't have the engineer, and the traffic engineer are not here. We received today, pretty late on, a response to our, the stormwater management report, and I was not able, the engineer was not able to come tonight to respond to that, and I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to try to go back and forth with him regarding the stormwater management. So as regards to traffic, I think it's laid out pretty nicely for you to take a look at some of the concerns regarding traffic at the site, which we talked about earlier on. But when you look at the amount of volume, and one of the issues that we found with the traffic study was the actual amount of volume going in and out. He had found through his review that the amount of cars going in and out and what it was based on was flawed in his analysis. So we tried to, one of the comments was to review, you know, we're relying on experts here. So we tried to go out to get our own analysis, so then you could have all the information, and then we hope you have, take time, we'll be able to review that. So with that being said, some of the issues that he, that he found was that some of the trip generation was based upon older data, that these modern automated car washes actually have the ability to process greater numbers of vehicles. So if we're going, going off of what the older car washes does, my client's car wash, he's been there for 32 years here in Wareham, and, you know, regarding lights and things like that, this is a closed building. So it's a lot different than what this car wash is going to be. We've seen the renderings, there's been concerns regarding the futuristic look, I know they've worked on it. I'm glad that the eminent domain issue was brought up, and that the variance, that is a concern, is this going to be setting a precedent for other parcels? And, you know, looking at some of the case law that was submitted regarding eminent domain, if you look at those cases, they were situations where a lot maybe deemed, maybe they had a plan approved, and then it was deemed unbillable due to a eminent domain taken by the town. So this is a situation where actually the landowner was compensated, all of those parcels, including my client, was compensated for the eminent domain, for the taking of their lot for the Cranbury Highway. So the fact, how does that relate to a hardship if there's been compensation? This is a new purchaser coming in, the landowner's been compensated, so how does that create uniqueness on the lot? I still have a hard time figuring out what the hardship is there as well on, to allow that variance, so I think that's something that should be taken into account by the board. One of the things that wasn't really brought up that I'd like to, that is on record, is the planning board. So when you do a site plan review, if we're going to that, the site plan review has other agencies are able to speak on it. I hope you were able to look at the site plan review, the planning board's comments. And in the planning board sees a wide array of different plans for the town, one of the comments that they had said was that basically there needs to be more of a thorough review, the other agencies have input. You know, site plan takes a long time for projects, especially, you know, a multimillion dollar project like this, and I would ask that all the information is be able to be reviewed in light of what they're asking. I think that's fair enough, we're not, you know, there have been comments that we're delaying or not, we want to give you all the information and then have time to review it and have that opportunity. One of the things that was a concern, and I know on other projects, when there's parking calculations, and it's not in Article 9 of our bylaw, and we're talking about parking, the building commissioner is, has a final say on that. I didn't see in the commissioner's letter where he spoke specifically about parking, I would note that there are free vacuums. How does that go into the parking calculation there? So if there are cars coming in, then there's also people parking, then we're talking about snow, so I'd like to see if the, there could be a letter in regard to the adequacy of the parking on site. And that really directly relates to the traffic and how many, if that's seen as adequate of how many cars are going in and out of the facility. So those are some of the concerns, and I just hope that we're able to review those, and any questions that you have. Thanks.
All right, how many parking spaces do you have? Do you have over 22?
I'm going to let Kurt answer that question.
Yeah, let me pull up the plan so I give you the right number. Okay. So we have...
I counted 28 without the inside.
Yeah, we've got 28. 26 standard spaces, one standard accessible and one van accessible. And of those 28... So, two, four, six, eight, 16 of them are vacuum stations.
Okay. Well, usually in the service bay, a car per 300 square feet, and if you divide 68 by 30, it's 22 cars. I know it's a vacuum, but that's what people are there for, to vacuum. So you can't say you want one parking, parking, and one for vacuum. So, and if we didn't have any, then again, don't take, I'm just, I'm 90% sure, but if we don't have anything before, in front of us from the commissioner, I guess he didn't say anything, Mr. Rowley, I guess he didn't mention it.
If I may, if I may address?
Yeah, go ahead.
The commissioner issued two letters, originally initial letter prior to our filing. We revised our plans in connection with those items which he identified, and then basically, after our first hearing, the board asked us to sit down with the building inspector to discuss...
Right.
...any and all additional potential violations of the bylaw, or any additional relief in which we needed. He issued a second letter, which basically identified that we needed site plan special permit, identified that we needed a variance in connection with the landscape buffer, which we had filed. He has reviewed all plans, both sets of plans, and has not identified any violation of parking or a request for a variance. So the whole purpose of that letter is for him to review and identify what we may need. The reason it's not in that letter is because the letter identifies what you need. We basically comply with the, with the bylaw, we have the requisite number of parking, and that's why it's not in that letter, because we are in compliance.
Yeah, that's what, I mean, if we don't have it in front of us, we can't act, we can't just...
If I may answer, Charlie, so in my experience, though, that he actually puts that determination within the letters, that that's one of the pieces, that he is the zoning, he, when you go to Article 9 of our bylaw, if it does not distinguish who, what parking is on site under the specific use there, that he is supposed to make that determination. So I think it's, perhaps it just didn't get added into the letter, but it should be something that should be reviewed, especially when there's opposition in the case.
I don't know, I mean...
I think it's fair for us to take note of it. We take note, you know.
Okay.
The, we are required to demonstrate that we comply with the bylaw. We have 28 parking spaces, we are required pursuant to the formula to provide 22. We are in compliance, there is no, the whole reason of the building inspector's letter is to identify those areas to which we need additional relief, not to go through and provide a memo of every single aspect of it. That has been reviewed on two separate occasions, and parking has not been brought up.
I'm not chairing, but I'm going to step in with the chair, because he's reading. We have an opposition person speaking, and you're kind of...
I will, I apologize.
You didn't respond through the chair, so I'm going to ask you to stop responding.
I apologize, thank you.
Thank you.
Point of order, I apologize.
Like I said, according to my calculation, they're in compliance, and if, we don't have anything from the inspect, the building commissioner, so I really, I don't, and I see the professional engineer stamp in here, they worked it out with Charlie for the last few times, I guess, I don't know what to say. I think, yes, Charlie?
Mr. Chairman, I remember asking the question whether or not the building inspector had made a determination that the parking was adequate, because as has been suggested, if it's not specified for the particular use, it's up to the building inspector to make the determination as to the correct number of parking spaces. It probably is appropriate that at least you get correspondence from him to that effect, so that you have something that he did review, because the bylaw calls for him to do that. Not to just review the things that he thinks you'll need a variance for, but to confirm that the number of parking spaces is what is called for when there is no specific number identified in the parking portion of the zoning bylaw.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
He does, the commissioner does say in his letter, 1520 site plan review, more than 10 parking spaces.
More than?
It says more than 10 parking spaces zoning board review. So he did mention...
Yeah, it becomes, once more than 10, it needs a, it needs a site plan, that's what he meant. Whenever you have over 10 parking spaces, it needs a site plan. That's what triggers a site plan, that's what he means. But on the service, it's 300 square feet, one car, and they need 22, they have 28. Let's go, let's go past this one. On the traffic, let's go back to the traffic, how's the board feel? I'm going to stop by you, Chris, about the argument with the attorney. What do you think of her argument that the traffic is not, whatever, not right what they say in the...
Well, I didn't really compare the two traffic studies that I got and evaluate how many more cars that were on her traffic, on that traffic study than there was in the original traffic study. So I guess I don't have any comment right now.
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I mean, we have an opportunity... I mean, we have an opportunity, we actually do have our traffic expert here tonight and we'd like to provide our position upon review of, of the numbers in which were provided earlier this week.
Yeah, I think let's hear it from the expert because none of us is an expert on that.
Matt.
Sure. So, I'm not sure if any of you had a chance to review the, the peer review study, but I just wanted to go through a few slides here just to address two of the main topics which are trip generation and site access. So, just to take a step back to where we started with our study, so, we based our trip generation on some anecdotal evidence from the, from the proponent, as well as a comparison to the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual. So, in the ITE manual, there's two ways you can do projections for car washes. You can base it on the number of wash tunnels or you can base it on the building area. So, the TIAAS, that's our Traffic Impact and Access Study. Our trip generations were based on the number of wash tunnels and we use that for comparison to the actual numbers that we used in our study. So, the reviewer showed the ITE projections for the Saturday based on building area and they're showing numbers that were higher than what were in our study and I'll show you that on a table on the next slide. So, in our study, our numbers were on the right, we were assuming fifty in, fifty out during the PM peak hour and the same number for the Saturday midday peak hour. So, the reviewer prepared some projections based on square footage and in the evening they came up with eighty, which is lower than our hundred, so for the evening peak hour, we were assuming a higher trip generation. For the Saturday midday peak hour, their calculations showed two-hundred-and-eight total, which is a different methodology than I used in, in my study. So, just to verify that there are no impacts associated with that, we did some supplemental analysis and I'll get to that in a, in a subsequent slide. One thing I wanna reiterate, and I mentioned this in my initial presentation back in August, that our trip generation projections did not take into account pass-by trips. So, what I mean by a pass-by trip is somebody who's on Route Six, sees the car wash, pulls in, gets their car washed, goes on their way to where they were going before. They're not a new trip to the road, they were already on the road and they're just continuing their trip after their stop. We also didn't take into account internal capture trips. And what internal capture trips are, is someone who's in the plaza shopping, looks across the parking lot, sees the car wash, goes over, gets their car washed and goes on their way. Again, not a new trip to the road. My study assumed all of that traffic was new trips. And by a new trip, I mean a person getting off their couch saying, "I'm going to get my car washed and then I'm coming back to my couch." That's a new trip to the area. We assumed all of our trips were new trips to the area, so we think that's a highly conservative way to look at the future traffic. As I mentioned on the previous slide, we conducted some supplemental capacity analysis, assuming the higher traffic generation rate for Saturday. And the analysis shows no significant impacts at the, the signal with Cranberry Highway and the Ocean State Job Lot signal. And I can just show that on a table on the next slide. So, on the left side, you see the results from our initial traffic study. On the left, the overall level of service is C with twenty-three seconds of delay. On the right, you can see that with the higher trip generation, which I think is overstated, it's a level of service C with twenty-four seconds of delay. So, a negligible difference between the numbers that are in our study and the numbers that are in the, the peer review study. So, I maintain that our numbers are accurate and, and address the, the potential impacts of the project, but just wanted to demonstrate that to the board, that even with higher numbers, we're still showing negligible impacts. So, in terms of site access, there were some comments in the review letter about safety. I just wanted to point out that a road safety audit was conducted for the Cranberry Highway corridor, that was done back in two thousand twelve. All the recommendations from a road safety audit get passed on to Mast dot and those get incorporated for future designs. So, the design, the Cranberry Highway improvements, you know, have those inform, you know, information from the road safety audit. Just wanted to point out that the proposed site driveway is located in roughly the same location as the existing curb cut, just with a couple of significant differences. The Mast dot design closes about a hundred and seventy-five feet of wide open pavement that's there today, that'll be curbed. It also makes the existing driveway a right in, right out, right turn in, right turn out where it's a full access now. So, it's definitely a much safer design. And just also wanted to reiterate from the last hearing that the Mast dot design initially provided a second curb cut off Cranberry Highway, which is not being proposed as part of the plan. So, overall, the Mast dot design will provide a safer travel through this area when it's completed.
Let me ask you something. How many cars that, the tunnel can wash an hour?
I'd have to defer to Ariana.
I think it looked like almost fifty per hour, a minute per wash.
No, no way. Lot less than that.
I saw something earlier, they were talking fifty-five.
That's the trips.
Do I need to identify myself again?
No.
Okay. So, the, the, the equipment can wash, I wanna reiterate, it could wash eighty cars an hour, you know, thereabouts, but, and it'll wash a car every three minutes or so, it's fast and it's designed to be fast. But, you know, we want it to be fast also so that people can get in and out fast. It's not that our expectation is we're gonna wash eighty cars an hour and I think the traffic study shows that's not what we expect for visits for the vast majority of time. But, to answer your question, it's about a three-minute wash process and we could wash, you know, eighty cars an hour if we needed to on a good day.
Can I, may I?
Yeah.
So, it's, it's a single line, isn't it? It's one car going through at a time.
Well, but we can put the cars pretty close together. This is a rubberized conveyor tunnel.
So, it doesn't go from beginning to end with just one car?
Exactly, yeah.
So, you can, I get it, okay. 'Cause I didn't figure how three divided into sixty and came out to eighty.
Yeah, so, it, it, there could be, say, five or so cars, I think five or six cars in the tunnel, kind of all making their way through, almost like a train, right? If you think about it that way.
It's how tight you pack that dishwasher.
Exactly. That's a good analogy, yeah.
So, in your opinion, as a traffic consultant, what do you think the highway can handle two lanes with divider in the middle? How many cars an hour?
That's difficult to say. Yeah, I don't wanna throw out a number, but I will say that the capacity of Cranberry Highway is gonna be significantly enhanced with the, with the Mast dot improvements. And this, as my analysis was showing in that table, that can be well absorbed within, within that capacity and still have high-level operations at the, at the signal.
And you think the dividend will help in the traffic, apparently? Like, the, the middle line, the, the dividend they did?
Yeah.
It makes traffic flow better, worse, what do you think?
I would say better. I mean, you, you don't want people taking a left turn out of an unsignalized driveway and this, this makes it so that it's a right turn in, right turn out. If you wanna go back to the signal, you gotta go back out the, the plaza driveway.
You know, with regard to your question, Mr. Chairman, my memory is that I've seen some demographics that say that section of highway handles thirty thousand and an excessive thirty thousand cars per day. And if I divide that by twenty-four, I come up to a twelve-hundred-and-fifty cars per hour. Now, I know there won't be twelve-hundred-and-fifty cars per hour at two o'clock in the morning 'cause the bars close at one, but, you know, I guess if we double the average of twelve-fifty, twenty-five-hundred cars an hour could be going by there, based on, based on what's going down there right now before the roads improved.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
I just wanna say our position, it is in the opposition regarding the actual potential of this car wash, it's well off of eighty an hour. It's two-hundred-and-seventeen is what...
An hour?
Yep. And that's why if you actually go to page three of the exhibit from the traffic engineer, where it has that footnote that will show you those videos so you can see how this is different than the car wash that's currently in town. It's a tunnel wash and the, the capacity is a lot higher. So, we're going from eighty to two-seventeen, it's a lot different. So, there's a real question of fact there and that's something you guys need to determine, but...
So, two, if you're saying they could do two-hundred-and-seventeen cars an hour?
That's, that's what the traffic engineer is saying, so he's looking at two-seventeen per hour, which would be...
So, I guess there's plenty of room to split the, to split the pie. If, if you make a hundred, if each makes a hundred, everybody will still be happy, right?
Well, why it's relevant is that we're talking about traffic here. So, it's the amount of vehicles going in and out of there and, and the accidents. Let's be honest, it's a dangerous piece of Cranberry Highway. Further down the road was one of the most, I think it was top sixty dangerous...
Right, before the divider. But, now we have the divider, we have a great highway, we have sidewalks, we're not gonna beat the dead horse. I found the inspector's letter and he mentioned what needs a special permit and what needs a variance and on the parking spaces, he didn't mention needs a variance. So, I guess they are in compliance. They just say a review, but he didn't say he needs a variance. If they had, the last one they requested, he would, he's very good, he would have said a variance. So, apparently, and we can't argue this, unless you wanna appeal his decision.
Yep.
I mean, you could appeal the commissioner's decision.
I think it would be wise to get that.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just respond to the...
Yes.
...generation comments. So, first of all, the, the two-hundred-and-seventeen that was reported, that is sort of the theoretical capacity of the car wash. I think that's highly unrealistic that that would ever actually happen, the, the most amount of cars possible that could be put through there. And second of all, I just wanted to point out that, you know, there is still the same customer base for car washes. Just because there's another one being added doesn't mean it doubles the amount of people that need to get their car washed in this area. So, there is gonna be sharing of the customer base here. So, that's why I think that's highly unrealistic to see those kinda numbers with a competitor right down the road. One other final point I wanted to make though is just, just sort of to put things in context, the numbers that I'm talking about in my study are in the same ballpark as what would be generated by a restaurant, which this was a previous restaurant of about sixty-eight-hundred square feet. The shift generation for that type of restaurant is in the same ballpark of what we're talking about for the car wash. Under much safer conditions with the, with the new curbing and the limited turn restrictions on Cranberry Highway.
All right. Richard, we haven't heard from you.
And I'm fine with that. Are we, are we done with the, we opened it to the public, we were listening to objections from a... Are we done with, are you, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be, are you done?
I'd just like to have another thing on record that is on the formal record with the planning board. One of the submissions that we, we had was the flooding, which is, is certainly a concern. There were actual pictures on Exhibit E, so you guys could take a look at that back lot. We want that on record, that there's real concerns there regarding the, the water and, and some of the issues going there. So, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, regarding the flooding, do you agree, Charlie, that the, the stormwater management they provided with the perk test they did, that would handle it?
Well, there's a combination system at play here. One is, one is the infiltration system, which takes the first flush, shall we say, of storm water. But, if you look at the, especially the two rear, or the, the infiltration system on the side and the one in the back, they're connected to a stormwater system which is on the Ocean State Job Lot property in which discharges to a wetland or a pond area that's out to the back of the old, the tractor supply. There was one of the comments I made, that that system, there needs to be some verification that they have the authority to discharge onto that property that is not theirs. The one that's out front is subject to the fact that the state highway, according to their own admission, in the plans that we've seen, is to be raised roughly a foot. I'm not saying that that will absolve the, the whole issue there, but along with the stormwater management system that the state did and the fact that they are now collecting a lot of that on their own. And a lot of it which was going to the front is now going to the rear and out the back. I don't have any concerns over that. So, the only other thing I could say about, there are some issues that apparently have been brought up by other people. So, I would say that those particular issues perhaps should be resolved between the two of them. If they have issues with, with respect to what has been proposed and contrary to what I've said, then I would say that they should probably work that out.
But, you, but what you're saying, their, their stormwater management report is in compliance?
I believe their report is in compliance, yes.
All right.
May I respond to that? Just a question for, you know, due process here that we've submitted on Monday and I'm curious if Mr. Rowley was able to review that engineer's thoughts and that that should be flushed out some more considering that we actually got a response today from the petitioner. So, I think it would be wise for Mr. Rowley maybe to take a look at both, or if he's had the chance to.
I, I don't recall seeing a response from the applicant on the stormwater that was presented from another engineer, so...
I came in at, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I came in today at three-thirty, so it probably didn't get to you.
Okay, well, my computer was shut off by three o'clock, so. I will have to take a look at that, Mr. Chairman, I haven't had a chance to. I'll certainly see what the response is from the stormwater report that was submitted and I will be prepared next time if you continue the hearing to give your comment on it.
Ken, what's the deadline on that hearing? The variance, we have to act, right?
The variance, you have a hundred days from...
I got it.
When they applied.
From when they applied, which was previous to August eleventh.
So, a hundred days from August eleventh is a, it's ten-twenty-eight, that's the deadline, but we had the storm, right?
October twenty-eighth.
October twenty-eighth, but because we had the storm, we pushed it now, so I guess we have...
Tonight's the night.
Tonight is the night. And so, special permit, eleven-nine, November ninth is the deadline, but because the storm. So, tonight, if the applicant wishes, don't wanna give us an extension, we have to act.
May I speak real quick?
Yeah.
We had a hearing on October thirteenth. There was, counsel was present, indicated they're gonna do a traffic report. They, they submitted their position on October eighth, not October twenty-seventh, October eighth. We turned around our response in less than two days. We submitted that today and I have, their engineers are not here tonight to talk about it. Neither engineer is here tonight to talk about it. I have both of my engineers, I'm paying for both of my engineers to be here tonight. We're looking for a further delay when we have already discussed the comments in which are raised and, and, and the stormwater report which was identified and also the traffic report. Both of my engineers have, have addressed those issues. If there's any questions about what they have provided, which I believe you have seen, ask them now. To have us be further delayed because they either don't have their experts here tonight or they waited until November eighth to basically submit that, she makes comments that I waited until today to submit it, I basically got it on October, hey, I turned it around in two days.
I, I do...
But, to continue this one more time, based on the fact that I have both of my experts here, we have addressed every single one of those comments, I don't understand.
I totally understand, Counselor, but this is totally up to the board and not up to me, so if...
If there's specific questions from the board that they feel that they still need to have, then maybe we can identify that.
But, before we go further, anyone else in the public wanna speak against this project? Except the Counselor. Anyone else? I see none. What's, what's the wishes the board?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
For the variance and special permit?
For everything. No more comments.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Before we go there, can I get an, an idea of where the board is before we close the public hearing?
You want us to vote before?
No, I'm looking for a strong...
You wanna have a feel of it.
I wanna get a feel. I'm not looking for a vote, I'm just trying to get a feel.
Correct, how you feel about it?
I'm in favor of the car wash.
You're in favor, Veronica?
I'm in favor of the car wash, but not the variance.
Well, it's the two, doesn't, it's not separated. It has, the two too good to go together.
Well, it's actually a separate decision, isn't it?
It's a separate decision, but if we don't give the variance, we go back to the drawing table, completely different plans.
Well, we could...
Okay, that's fair enough. She's against the variance, she's, Chris, you are against the variance for, or for you for both?
Well, it, it depends on how the variance is, is put. If it's put with some conditions, I'll probably be for it, yeah.
The variance, can condition the variance, the way, you, you, either you grant the variance or you don't.
Can I make a comment about that variance and the reason why I'm against it? I'd like to be clear on the reason why I'm against the variance.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, initially, I had thought about the variance and we are setting a precedent for that whole corridor. And then, Mrs. Morton reminded me that there has been compensation for those changes to the properties, which removes the hardship in my mind. This is a new purchase and a new development of this property. It's not somebody that's existing and has something there, so we're willing to work with them to deal with that change because the person that owned it previously doesn't own it anymore, they were compensated for that change to the property. So, and it reminds me of a development that, a decision that we made further down on Cranberry Highway and eminent domain was brought up and there was an issue about foregoing the buffer between the highway and that property and I voted in favor and I later regretted that, because I don't like the way that it looks visually. We removed the, we, we granted the variance that they didn't have to have the written buffer, and I'm not happy with that decision. I'm talking about the car sales, oil change, all that stuff down the street, we, we granted that. And I don't want to set that precedent, because I don't like the way it looks, and we're going to have a lot more people coming before us looking for that variance.
If I'm.
If, if, let me answer this, because I know the area well. Those, I totally understand what you're saying. Those car lots were inexisting, that's one thing. The, I know they were compensated, I had a property there, but they compensate your peanuts, compared, comparing to what the land's worth. The state give you peanuts. I'm not sticking up for the applicant, I'm just saying facts here, and I'm, I want to be fair to everybody and tell how things are. The, the second one, you got to keep in mind that this property has the most affected, I mean, that circle falls in their land, the same with Buzz's Way Garage, they are the, the one who get affected the most. Most of the properties, they get like 10 feet, but this property, a lot get taken of it, so.
Because of the turnaround?
Huh?
Is it because of the turnaround?
That is correct.
See, they get hit the hardest, them and Buzz's Way Garage. And this is some consideration. I mean, I know we have to have a highway and stuff, but we have to consider these things, not, we can't be comparing, everyone is separate. Each, each project has its merit. I'm just trying to be fair, I'm not trying to shut the Counselor down or being on their side, so let's treat each one separate.
Didn't we discuss this variance in length at a previous meeting?
We did.
And didn't we come to the conclusion that we were leaning towards granting the variance, but we were requesting very, very heavy vegetation in there? It's a very small, it's on the screen as a.
Right, but Veronica wasn't in agreement from day one.
I, I watched the video, and I heard the discussion, but I didn't partake in the discussion, because I wasn't present.
May I?
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Just real briefly, in connection with being compensated, basically, case law basically supports the proposition. Every eminent domain case, where there's a taking, the, the state or whoever takes it has to provide compensation. They make, they do an assessment, and they, they have assessors, and everyone does get compensation for that. Case law has basically found that a variances have been deemed properly granted due to the shape of a lot that resulted from the actions of the Commonwealth through its powers of eminent domain, which was created by no fault of the current or previous owners. The appeals court considered an appeal, the Board of Appeals, grant of a variance relating to lack of frontage that was created due to the actions of the Commonwealth, although its powers of eminent domain. Holding that the variance have been properly granted, appeals court noted that the shape of the lot resulted wholly from the actions of the Commonwealth through its powers of eminent domain, which deprived the locus of any frontage, was created by no fault of the current or previous owners. Here, you're not setting precedent. Here, I have demonstrated every, and have gone through every single element of what we need. Variances are very difficult to obtain. This is one of those situations where we meet every single one of those elements for it. You're not setting precedent, you're doing your job by basically making sure that we meet all of those requirements. And I believe that in my memos, and as I have stated before, we meet every single one of those elements. If another property owner that has a similar taking, has a similar loss of this, comes before the board, then the board can take into consideration whether or not they are also unduly harmed as a result of this. This is not opening up the door for people to file variances. You have the, the case law, and you also have the facts of this lot that support that decision. And again, just so it's clear.
Can I?
Yes, go ahead.
You're not the current owner, are you, or the previous owner?
We are potentially in a PNS agreement, which allows us to seek this.
You're not the current or the previous, and that law applies to current or previous?
Anybody who goes into this lot will have similar issues, because if you look at where, if you look at this plan.
I, I don't disagree that they're going to have similar issues, but your point was the law is backing the granting of the variance, and in my interpretation of what you read, it does not.
Okay, fair enough. I disagree, but unfortunately, I believe we meet it. Thank you very much.
That's fine. Jimmy, how are you leaning?
I made my motion, I'm just waiting for everybody to stop talking so we can vote.
Rich?
Yes, sir.
All right, do you want to, want to close?
What's that?
We, we make two separate votes.
Yep, that's fine, close it up.
I'll repeat my motion.
Counselor.
I move that we close the public portion of this hearing.
All right, do I have a second on closing?
I second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Okay, we close. Let's start, any discussion, let's start with the variance. Any discussion we got before we, any motion?
Now, that, that variance, is that just for where the turnaround is?
That's that red part.
Just that turnaround area is really where the variance is? And if we can, can we stipulate that on the condition, when, when we make the motion?
Like what, you really can't, either you give it to, it's conditioned with the site plan, with the shrubs and the pavement and all this, but the, the mean of the variance, if we allow them to not build this or not, so you can't, either you say you could build it or not. I mean, if you want to condition it, like, you can't say, oh, I'm gonna, I want plants on it. That goes with the site plan. Do you understand? So a variance, it's yes or, or no.
I, I do understand that. So if we give him that variance, he can change that plan and, and not have 15 feet.
No, no, no.
All around.
What they're saying is the pink area right there.
Right.
Needs to be varied. That pink area is going to be part of their driveway.
I just want to make sure of that.
And the variance that we're granting them is to allow that to be part of their driveway. If we don't grant the variance, then that pink area cannot be part of their driveway.
It becomes part of the buffer.
Yep, I'm good.
Do you understand?
I do.
Okay, that being her motion.
I'd make, I'd move that we grant, are we gonna?
Do the variance first.
We gonna do the variance and the special permit all in one motion, or we want to do it in two?
No, separate, let's do separate.
So regarding the variance, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the variance as presented. 39-20, 20 for Hartford Realty Corp., for the address 30053013 Cranberry Highway. Do I have a second on Jim's, Mr. Akabachi's motion?
I second.
All right, we have a second by Richard Sample. All, all in favor of the variance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Deny.
Deny, abstain. So we have 4, 1, 0. So the variance carries. Okay.
4, 0, 4, 1, 0.
4, 1, 0.
Yep.
On.
On the special permit, I, I make a motion that we grant as presented.
Okay, we have.
Standard conditions.
We have a motion by Jim Akabachi to grant the special permit for 39-20, and with the standard condition and as presented. Do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain.
0, 0.
So it carries. If anyone, I just have to mention this, if anyone is aggrieved by this decision, under Massachusetts, Chapter 40A, Section 10 or 17, the appeal, 17, you have the right to appeal this decision within 20 days after it's filed by the town clerk, and I believe it's Section 10. No, it's Section 17, sorry.
Section 17.
17. So whoever's agreed by this decision, they get 20 days to appeal it after it's filed by the town clerk. I thank you very much, and.
Thank you very much for your time.
Go all the way, hope it works out for everybody. It's unfortunate, but it is what it is. All right, 55-21, Mannix, special permit, variance, site plan review, 238 and 240, Sandwich Road.
There is a new settlement, thank you. Yes, sir.
Did you vote on all the permits, or necessary for this? Was there a site plan review you voted on when you said special permit?
The special permit, we voted on the special permit, we granted it.
We didn't do site plan review, though. Were we supposed to vote on a site plan review and approve it?
Against abstaining.
Hang on a minute. Nazzy.
Yes, sir.
They're questioning whether or not we needed to vote on the site plan review as a separate vote.
Site use is a special permit use.
We already voted.
We, we did. We voted.
Granted it.
Did you, did you include the site plan review in your, in your vote?
Yes.
Well, as a special permit inside.
Yeah, that's what we were voting on. We were voting on, we voted once on the variance, and then we voted a second time on the special permit.
Let's make a correction vote, because if and, well, it's not an if. When it goes to go out, we have to be clear. Let's make another vote. Let's go back to 39-20 on the special permit for site plan.
Site plan review.
Okay. Can I have a motion on the site plan review?
Still moved. We're going to move to approve the site, the, the site plan review is, is.
As well as a special permit.
Correct.
Do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, that carries. That's much better. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ian, sir.
Thank you. She wants it right when she appeals it.
I'll tell you. No, it would have helped me not to tell you.
I know, effective hearing. All right. That's behind us, I'm glad. 55-21, special permit or, and variance for the site plan for 238 and 240 Sandwich Road. Okay, so public hearing, and this one's still open, name and address for the record, and let's hear it where we are.
On that last one, anybody that's got any, Nazzy, did you have a big bundle on that last one that we should get off the table before we, before we have a car wash, be in, before they're washing cars at the assisted living facility?
Attorney Julian Morton, 184 Main Street, here for the applicant, Mr. Frederick Mannix, and Brian Wallace is here for GEC Engineering. So want to refresh our memory on, on this lovely petition of where we're at. So we are here, looking for final site plan review, and I wanted to start off with us just a little recap on, on the outstanding, some of the questions that have come up, and clarity, real clarity on, on what we're looking for. I think there's been a question regarding, is this a special permit? It's been kind of thrown out a couple of times, and I just want to reiterate, if you look at the code and page 11 on one of the use tables.
Do you mind waiting just one minute, because I think you deserve all our attention.
Got it.
Thank you.
I, I do listen, believe me.
I know he's listening.
When I'm doing things, I'm not ignoring, but I'm listening. But we got to get this one.
Let's get the, let's get the decision, have a drink.
Some tea.
Can I go have a drink?
Water is acceptable, but bourbon is preferred. Are you gonna, on that last matter, are you going to handle the decision, write up a decision for us? Not you, you're the opposition, I'm sorry. It would have been the.
Absolutely not.
She writes it the way she likes.
You can write it up.
Absolutely.
It's been denied.
Write the one that you like, then you're good.
He escaped, why don't we just let him, why don't we communicate with them after the meeting, so that, we can't sign it now anyway, it's got to be written up, right?
There was one that was written up.
Oh, in anticipation, was there one, one in favor and one?
It wasn't, it wasn't here, I'll say it.
Yeah.
All right.
We'll, we'll come into the office during the week, and we'll sign your name to it, and we'll say it was done under duress.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, sorry, Attorney Morton, I just wanted to, sometimes we yell at the audience when they get distracting, and I just was, you know, I was distracted.
All right, so going back, if we want to, oh, is Mr. Sample here?
I think he went to the men's room.
Oh, do you want to wait?
He's taking advantage, he's taking, he's taking advantage of the moment.
No.
Do you have, do you have new plans there, Naz? No, wait in a moment. I've got three new sets of plans. I was going to give you guys a set. Richard, before you sit down, thank you. And Nazzy and I will share this one. I believe these are the stamped, architectural stamped plans.
Those are either the site plans or the architectural plans.
The three that were all together.
Yeah, or both.
It says site plan on the heading.
Okay, those are the architectural plans.
I'll start, so those are the stamped architectural renderings. One of the things that was requested, which we did submit before, we had a hurricane here, so that's been submitted to, to you guys, so you had those. I know that's one of the things that was being requested. I'd like to go back to kind of what I was speaking about, just it's, it's very important for the record, regarding, is this a special permit? Looking at our code, that this is not a special permit, that we had a review regarding the variances for height, side setback. If you go to the principal use tables within our bylaw, commercial strip, we are a yes regarding nursing home, intermediate care center, which we've extensively gone through the definition of that through some memorandums. So in regards to that use, it's not a special permit use, just wanted that for the record.
This is, the point is that this is an allowed use.
This is allowed use, just want to get that on there, I think it's been kind of.
All right, let me explain to everybody what does that mean. So if you look at the zoning board, this is allowed use by right, so it doesn't need the special permit, so we're only voting on site plan. Send that, everybody. Site plan, you need a majority, supermajority, we don't need four out of five.
We need, we need four?
No, three.
Three, we need three?
Because it's allowed by.
What specifically about the site plan are we?
For instance, the other ones needed a special permit, because it's a car. If you open a car use, if you open the zoning by law, this is, it says a Y, not a SPZ.
On the.
Page 11 of the.
Site plan review is a special permit, and special permits require a majority, a supermajority.
Site plan review, a supermajority?
Yes, site plan review is a special permit, and so it requires a supermajority.
Not a simple?
No.
Like, you're, you're missing your microphone, they have it on.
Counselor, what do you have on, what do you?
So, I think we look, take a look at Article 15, which is regarding site plan review.
Yeah.
To be able to take a look at that. So, you know, in regards to special, special permit granting authority, that's the SPGA, which you are in this case, right? Because we're coming before you to seek variances. So, so whether we're talking about. Supermajority, majority, is my understanding that it's just majority, but if they're saying it's supermajority, because it weren't.
You're reading our bylaw?
Yeah, I'm under Article 15, site plan review.
He's opening the bylaw, too.
Okay.
Let's, let's all either agree or disagree, and then it's going to be.
It says in the purpose, that the purpose of the site plan review special permit is to ensure the design, that, as a matter of right or by special permit, will constitute suitable development, not, not impacting neighborhood, et cetera.
What page is that, Ken?
One oh one. One oh, yeah.
One hundred and eight?
Eleven.
One hundred and eleven.
So what's, what's interesting about that sentence, right, that Mr. Buckland just read, is that it's talking about as a matter of right or by special permit. So if we're coming in front of you seeking a use, special permit for, for example, if we're in a different zone, then yeah, it would be a special permit. But I'm saying by right, this use is permitted. So I think that's, that's how I interpret that clause.
What number is it on?
Fifteen ten, purpose under site plan review.
Let's just take, if it's okay through the chair, I'll just take a minute to, to really read this and make sure we...
Just to point out that anything is, is a matter of right, if it includes more than ten parking spaces, it's a special permit because it has to go through site plan review. So it'd be site plan review, special permit.
Yeah, that's what triggers it. He's right. You're right.
And that's what Requena says to the commissioner in his letter.
Right, because it's over ten, ten parking spaces. You're absolutely right. That's what he says, Requena, in his letter?
Yes, dated September sixteen.
That's solved. Then we back to supermajority. Unless you come up with something different, counsel. No? Okay.
So we need, we need four, four DAs or four days.
Yeah.
Our votes.
And for the record, Chris and, and Chris will be voting on this one, but let's, just let me make sure he was in all the meetings.
I haven't missed any meetings.
You have, okay.
Neither of them have missed any meetings.
So, okay, so Chris will be voting.
No, Mr. Chairman, I believe that, are we sticking if there's one step in that, that they stick with the case? I mean, we preliminary voted on the variances where I believe Mr. Semple was the, was the, the step in, was actually the person, and Mr. Morrison was voting as well. So I'm curious how that works out.
The variance, we already committed to this.
Right.
So this is, we gave our word and we committed to it.
So shouldn't it not though switch to another associate member?
No, the variance will, will be signed by, by Jake.
Right, but in regards to the site plan review tonight, shouldn't it be the same voting members who voted on that variance?
If you want that kid, that matter, you'll have four board members. But Mr. Conte has the right to be on it because he has, he, he watched all of them.
Okay.
He's, 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 he's voting in Jacob Morrison's seat, basically. That's why we have an associate.
Yeah, so why wouldn't it be the same associate? You're saying that you have to flip on each one? Why wouldn't you stay, if one associate's coming in and Mr. Semple had already stepped in for Miss, I don't know if it was, I believe it was Mr. Morrison.
Mr. Semple is now a full member. He votes on everything.
So there's, one, two, three, okay.
As far as us here tonight, if Jake was here, Jake would be voting.
Right.
Because Jake's not here.
He's voting.
Chris is our alternate.
And, and Chris, he never missed any of those meetings, so he could be in them. If he had missed two of them, he can't.
Okay.
You understand?
It's just, you know, it's the, it's the magic of makeup. Just make believe that's Jacob.
Yeah. All right. So, all right, so where'd we leave it and where are we going? Where'd we leave it last time?
Do you want to see this at all?
Yes, let's do it.
Who's going first, the applicant or us?
There. Where did you leave with the question? I see all the question answered from Mr. Rowley.
Yes, so we submitted a response, Mr. Mannix did, so he can speak on that regarding some of the further site plan review responses and back and forth. We do have in the record, the fire department, a great letter from them, saying that they're satisfied fully from Captain Branolini. So that was important for us because the site, that was one of the major concerns regarding fire and access. So that is taken care of, but if there needs to be discussion regarding our responses, we're happy to do that. I think that there's been really exhaustive responses and we've tried to work as much as possible to, to make this understandable, what we're trying to do here, provide you with stamped plans, engineering, architectural. So at this point, if there are more questions or further concerns, we can respond to those. And we'd like to opportunity to respond to them if they're really big concerns, but to vote against something because you don't like it or, or because you think it's too big for the site, I mean frankly, it's, it's by right this, this can happen. We've discussed it over and over. That was the main thing about the variance with the Solarium. So, so if there's any questions, we're happy to answer.
All right. Charlie. Is all the stuff has been addressed, what's standing?
I would certainly disagree with that last statement, that through the variance, you've addressed the size, the safe and so forth of the building. That's a separate issue and it comes under site plan review. And I made comment about that in my October, I believe it was the twenty-sixth letter.
Yeah.
If not, it was the one before that. And it all has to do with the requirements of site plan review, that you look at it in terms of the mass, the size, and the relationship to the buildings around it. That has nothing to do with the variance. What you voted on in the variance was strictly the height of the structure. And that was, it was the only thing that you voted the variance on, my recollection. So anything to do with the size of the building, its scope with respect to how it relates to other buildings in the area, whether or not all the other features of the, of the site and so forth blend in with that, is all a part of site plan review and certainly is something that you can consider.
I, I agree. We agree.
So to make a statement that it's not a part of your deliberations tonight is completely wrong.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think it got mischaracterized, what I was trying to say. I think what I'm trying to talk about is that there has been public sentiment and also members that have just said, it's too big for the site. You know, I have no problem going through, and we have responded pretty exhaustively with, with all of these details, but it was a general statement regarding the size and, and that's been a common theme throughout, that you think it's too big for the site. And, and just regarding, so I'm sorry if that was mischaracterized, but that's not what I'm trying to say.
Anyway, the, the technical comments and responses, Charlie, what's standing, what's, okay, I mean, I see all these answers here. They said they answered everything on October twenty-sixth. You see with the red?
I've got so many things in front of me now. I'm not sure exactly which one we're referring to. But when I made comment about the size and so forth, that was my, my comment in, goes back to October second. And then we got a revised set of plans dated October eleventh, and I responded to those on October twenty-sixth.
Well, we have before us this evening, plans that are dated October twenty-second. Have you seen those plans?
I have seen those and I looked over them and I, I don't see that those plans substantially changed from the ones that I reviewed for the eleventh of October. I did note that there were a couple of things on there that they did change. One was at the directive or the request of the fire department, and that was to put a stairway on the extreme northwest corner of the building on the outside. They've also made some modification to the, the basement floor where, where the parking is, because I had commented on squeezing in of the, of the turning movements. The turning movement plan that was provided, though, only shows that, that it's available for, for the cars. It doesn't talk about whether or not it might include a van that would go into those handicap spaces. Those are the major things. They did make another change in the, in the secondary access, where it went from eight percent to seven and a half percent. But in order to do that, they blocked half of the entrance with a fence because there's now a one-foot retaining wall in front of the entrance. So this goes along with, with what I've been trying to say all along, that all of these things point to the fact that the site is too big, or the building is too big for the site, because every time you make a change, you're incorporating things that don't make any sense. I made a...
Did you see these responses?
I will, I will take a look at it in a second. Yeah, this is with respect to my October twenty-sixth one, and I believe I have that. You know, one other thing that was mentioned at a hearing was, well, there's no sidewalk in the site, but they can use the one that's on Route six. That's, that's a non-answer as far as I'm concerned. That requires people who are here because they are elderly, because they need some support, to either walk all the way down the entrance to the east end and walk out there in the main entrance to the property, or to take that sloped entrance, which is still a seven and a half percent grade, out to the sidewalk there. So there's some things there that, I still have concerns over. I did put some things in my October twenty-sixth letter that deal with the various codes and so forth that are gonna have to be required from the state. So I haven't tried to respond to those specifically, other than to point out the fact that they're gonna need state approval for the curb cuts, any work that they do within the state highway they need approval for, and they're gonna need approval for the sewer line that goes down to, I forget what manhole it is, but anyway, it's around fourteen hundred feet away from this site. So I know that you have not asked me to comment on that, but nevertheless, before this project can go forward, they're gonna need the permit from the state to be able to do that. So in just looking at the other comments that are in red in this October twenty-sixth letter, I'm not finding anything that is unusual. They didn't change the location of the generator, which I had mentioned in both letters. On the other hand, there's an electric line that needs to go out to the, to the maintenance building. There's a sewer line that has to go out to the maintenance building. I see no reason why that generator couldn't be moved to that location to get it away from the living space on the property. So there are many things that are still there, which you're gonna have to take a look at as a board. And although they have made some minor changes in the plan, I guess you'd have to take a look at the responses and, and make a determination for yourself as to whether you're satisfied with them.
All right. Why couldn't you do like a sidewalk? And Mr. Mannix, why didn't you move the generator or something?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I can answer that question. My electrical engineer...
Just put this closer to you so he can hear it inside.
I responded earlier, I'm not exactly sure which date, but it was prior to this hearing, that the electrical engineer has chosen that location. And the reason he's chosen that location, if anyone is familiar, I'm sure Mr. Rowley is familiar with it, I don't know why he has an objection to it, that the, the switchgear, the switchgear room for facility is substantial, and the generator has to feed the switchgear. Now, I brought with me in answer to some of these questions that he's brought up, the state and federal codes require a lot of issues that he's brought up. They require to do certain things inside the building. One of the things they require is for you to have emergency power. So the emergency power for this facility has to feed the main switchgear. It doesn't make any sense to put this generator far away from the source of power, which is the main line coming in.
Could I ask, could I...
Yeah.
Can I finish? Before, I don't, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's okay.
So that it just doesn't keep nagging at me. What's the advantage of having a generator closer to the switchgear as opposed to, I mean, there's, there's a power generation plant in Niagara Falls that powers my house and my switchgear is my main disconnect, and it still works. So I don't understand why we can't put the generator across the yard. I just don't understand it. And, and an electrical engineer can't explain that to me, because I've asked them.
Well, there's, there's two, there's two answers to it. The, the cabling would be much, much bigger.
And that's so?
To get, to get there. And number two, the objection to the generator by Mr. Rowley is that he thinks it's gonna make too much noise. I believe, that, that's what he says. So he answered that question by having a, an enclosure, a generator enclosure. I, I, many, many generator enclosures are impossible.
I'm gonna interrupt you again. So I think the answer is, you're just plain saying, no, we're stubborn, we want it where it is.
No, absolutely not. We're saying that...
That's what I heard. You can say whatever you want from here on out.
Well, all right, well...
Thank you.
The, the objection was noise from the generator, and the generator doesn't, makes the noise, the decibel level is about a conversation, just like we're having now. That's, that's the level of noise. So there's no reason to move the generator for the noise issue.
How many kilowatts is that generator, do you know?
It, it hasn't been determined yet finally, but it's probably gonna be a two hundred kilowatt, maybe a two fifty kilowatt.
I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you, but this is a loud generator. I don't care how quiet, but it's a loud one. And I'm sure it's diesel, it's not gas, so...
It's a gas generator.
Gas?
And...
Gas over diesel. Propane, natural gas diesel. Right?
What do you mean, natural gas diesel?
No, it's not diesel. It's, it's, it's natural gas. We have gas in, in the street.
Okay, they, they do, they do both. They do diesel, they do by propane and...
Again, again, I don't want to get, I'm, I'm very familiar with generators. We, we have one in, in St. Cecilia Street across the church, and, and you know, it's a, it's two hundred and fifty KW generator.
It's not loud.
It doesn't make any noise. Does, no, it's not loud at all. The, the enclosure doesn't. It's an expensive thing to do. It's an expensive, expensive enclosure. But it works. We know it works. I've, I've seen them, we install them all over the city. Hospitals have them. We don't, Mr. Mr. Rowley is concerned about the noise with the, with the residents. It runs once a week as a, as a startup. It runs during an emergency. I'm not sure anybody here has a problem with running a generator during an emergency. But, but I, I think that, I think that the most important thing here is that the answer that he wants me to give, moving it over by the maintenance building, that's not where the electricity comes into the premises. The maintenance building is almost like having a garage shed in your house, and you're way out there, you put some, you put some electricity to it. It doesn't have the capacity to handle all that stuff. The switchgear, the transfer switches, there's an awful lot that takes place. I, I know, I, I install them. I'm not an electrical engineer.
Well, let's not, let's not argue too much about it.
Okay.
The board always can make a condition if they choose to approve that the generator be by the maintenance building, or the way it is. Let's move forward to something.
Okay. I, I think one of the main reasons that I, I, I don't know, if Mr. Rowley has objection to some things that, and the plans, which he has an awful lot of objection to and, and a lot of these things. The plans, you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, about the, the facility. It's, it's a long-term care facility by the state. It's, I have taken, I've, I've brought one copy. This is, you want to give that to them, please? So you just have it? You can have a copy. I've given it to counsel. This, this book represents just a portion of the laws that affect everything that happens in a licensed facility. Right down to sixty watt light bulbs have to be provided in the rooms. It tells you everything. There's one thing in there you'll find, you don't have to go to it now, you won't find it if you want to look at it, your leisure. They tell you that if, every, every bed has to have a reading light next to it, either attached to the wall or by the bed with a switch for the, for the resident. And the light has to be forty-three inches above the finished floor. That's the level of detail that the state requires of a facility of this, of this sort. So any questions regarding, Mr. Rowley has brought up staff, staff toilets, a lot of things in there. I'm not sure that's in site plan review, because he mentions that the mass of the building is the upper view. And we have discussed that in the past. This building dimensionally meets all the requirements of the zoning, as far as, not the height, but every other dimension, coverage, floor, coverage of the lot, everything is in, is in conformity. So I'm not sure, I'm sure the, the board has the right to make an objection, right to deny it, but it's not based on dimensional requirements. The building is big, and it's been pointed out a couple of times, it doesn't fit in. I think it does, because it's, it's in the hollow. The building is sited to use the existing contours. We didn't change the contours that much, and that's one of the reasons the, the percentages, grades come in. We, we haven't changed anything in that, in that land. It's, it's as is, where is, with, with some exceptions. At the end of my reply this time, I, I just say that the, the statement that Mr. Rowley makes at the end is just, it's, it's in there, it's the last thing I said. I, again, I, I did this. J.C. Engineering gave me the input that I read it, I needed for the engineering part of it. But this is my response, and I'm able to, you know, I don't think we have the time right now, but if you want to, I'll do it. This, I say at the end, the statement is incorrect. His, his statement that is incorrect is, "All other matters contained in the October second, twenty twenty-one review that are not identified above remain of concern and have not been addressed as of this date." My response, in person and in writing, this statement is incorrect. All matters have been responded to and have been addressed as they apply to special permit review. Some comments were addressed in prior review letters and have been reiterated in this response document. I've identified some of those comments. The fact that he just mentioned that there's no van parking in, in the, in the, in the parking garage. The, the parking garage contains, I believe, two van spaces. They're identified by the size of the, the van parking spaces. There's a code, again, ADA, it tells you how big the parking spaces have to be. It's clearly, clearly labeled as, as, as it should be for a van parking space. And, and, you know, saying things that are not correct, let me put it to you that way, I don't think is fair. And I, if I respond to it and it's ignored, that's, that's more than not fair. And, and I think I, I have more comments to make on that and I will keep my mouth shut.
I, I thought about this a lot. I think everything inside the building, I don't think we should discuss. It's, it's a building code and it's not our jurisdiction. How wide the walkway, how wide the parking lot inside, how high the ceilings. I recommend, if the board... I recommend, if the board chooses to grant this permit, that we grant the site plan specifically for intermediate care. Because I believe when the intermediate care operator comes in, they file for a permit, because there will be a plan that high by the time they're ready to file for a permit. And it's gonna be all designed by professionals with every little detail, as Mr. Mannix said. So we could, like I said, if the board choose to grant it, it will be granted only for intermediate care use. So in other words, if one day he wants to change it to nursing home, that permit void a null. If he wants to change it to use Allah, it's void a null. To a car wash, void a null. So just to make our life easier, because we are not professional in this arena, in intermediate care hospitals and stuff, we could sit down here and argue, and argue, and argue, and we're not gonna go anywhere, we're not gonna get answers. So we're the only thing, we're gonna concentrate on the site plan. Let's not go inside this building and discuss anything, because we don't know what we're talking about, quite honestly and frankly. Yes, Charlie?
I agree with that.
Yes, Charlie.
I'd like to make one comment about that, though. The only, I will say, okay, if you wanna talk about what goes on each floor, that's up to you. But in this particular case, parking has been located below the building. That restricts what's in that parking area, because they can't put it on the outside, they don't have enough room. There are restrictions. When you look at the plan, there's only a difference in height of nine feet between the floor of the parking garage and the elevation of the first floor.
So that the parking lot is only nine feet high?
No. The difference in height between the first floor that you walk on and the floor of the parking garage is a total of nine feet. How much of that depth, then, has to be added or put below the nine-foot elevation to get to the bottom of whatever holds that floor up? That's gonna be less than nine feet. You have on one side of the wall that's facing Sandwich Road, the outlet for the sewer line. Sewer lines inside a building are what, quarter inch per foot as you run from one point to another? That's the minimum pitch on plumbing inside a building, as I recall it. So when you run a quarter inch per foot over any long distance, and you have to cross that aisle where the parking is, it's gonna be at some elevation.
Right.
So what are the, what are the concerns, or what are the impediments to getting vehicle traffic in there? If you have a problem locating lines and so forth, they'd have to be somewhere below a nine-foot elevation. Cars are not nine feet, I understand that.
Right. I totally agree with your theory.
But to say anything, it doesn't have anything to do with this, suppose they come back and say, well, nine feet isn't enough, now we gotta raise the first floor up about two feet in order to get the clearance we need.
He's out of luck, because he's gonna have, let me explain something to you.
All right, if you wanna say that, fine.
No, no.
You know, we'll let it go.
I wanna be realistic and fair. The plumbing inspector in this town and every town I worked, very, very careful.
And it isn't an issue with the plumbing inspector, Mr. Chairman, it's a, it's an issue with the parking.
Right. Now, when this gentleman built, put his pipe so low, then the building inspector go to inspect, he's not gonna pass it. If it doesn't meet building code, he's not gonna pass it.
Building code may not have anything to do with it, it may be simply the clearance for the parking itself. It may very well pass building code.
Okay.
My question is, even if it passes building code, is there clearance enough that you can utilize the space as a parking garage for cars to go, be able to go in and out?
Okay, what's the standard? So it must be a code somewhere for standard height clearance for a car.
If there is, we don't know what it is, do we?
I'm sure the building commissioner knows, and the fire department. They should, I mean, they go to a thing and nickel you and dime for every little, for an inch.
Mr. Chairman, you're dealing with a site plan that requires parking to be inside the building.
I totally understand.
Why isn't it a concerned issue? It should be.
Okay, I totally understand. Again, I wanna be fair. If, if architect or engineer signs it this way to be built, who are we to say no? Is any of us certified can stamp and say it's wrong?
No, I'm not saying that. All I'm asking is, isn't it appropriate to get enough information that says that for a site plan, which in this case requires the parking to be under the building, that you be given some assurance that there is clearance that that parking area can be used?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'm gonna fight, I'm gonna fight back my initial-
We don't wanna fight back, we wanna be realistic, and this has taken so long.
This is an internal, this is an-
And it's way above our pay rate.
It's an internal issue.
And we don't understand it. This is the problem. I could, we could sit down all day, and he could tell me it has to be 20 feet high, or I could tell him four. I don't have the answer, unless Mr. Rowley could say, you know what, this is my stamp, this is how it's gonna be, I'm good with you. You stamp it, you tell me, I'll give you a letter saying this is wrong, and stamp it, then I'll say it's wrong.
If, if Mr. Rowley does not have-
Sir, let me finish. Do you know what I'm saying?
All I'm saying is that you have a site plan that you're being asked to look at now, and it includes parking in an area that no one can say for sure that there won't be issues, that that parking area can't be used because there's not enough clearance.
All right, so you mean to tell me now our building commissioner or the fire department can identify that and say it's wrong, or right or wrong?
If they can identify, and they say that with only nine feet of difference between the floor of the parking garage and the first floor of that building, that there's room enough to get the utilities in there so that there is still reasonable clearance for vehicles to go in and out, that satisfies my concern. Right now, nobody knows.
Okay, say he goes out and build it. You think the fire deputy, or the chief, or the captain, he's gonna tolerate that and sign off?
If a car can't get in there and get to the furthest parking space because there's too many things too low, the fire department isn't gonna care if he can't get in the garage? If that car has to stay outside, they're probably gonna be fine with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rowley, what do you propose as a possible solution?
Good, good, good question. What do you suppose, who should we ask?
Let the applicant provide information that says the minimum clearance that we will have in this building is thus and so, which will allow us to use this area for parking.
So you want the-
Wouldn't this architectural steel say that?
It's supposed to. I mean, there's an architectural stamp.
If I paid an architect to design a building that included parking, and then I couldn't park in the building, I know an architect that's gonna have one hell of a lawsuit on his hands.
Well, perhaps we could ask the architect, if the architect is here.
Architect stamped the plans and he's drawn, I think we're arguing about a moot point. I don't, in all respect.
Mr. Chairman.
I will, look, I've stated my case, I've stated what I think is important in terms of the final plan. I still think that there are deliberations that need to be made under Section 15, whatever it is, for the size, the shape, the mass of the building. I've given my reports, Mr. Chairman.
I totally understand, Charlie, but we're not professional.
And if you want to do them what you want to, go right ahead.
That's why we told you-
I've done all my, I've done the work I think I should.
There's no reason to be like this. We, because we don't understand it, we insisted this gentleman brings an architectural stamp, a professional architect, and he did. None of us can argue this, because we don't understand it. If, like, the time comes and he doesn't get a clear bill of health from the commissioner and the plumbing inspector and the fire department, that's his problem.
Then I've done all I can do, I can't do anymore for you.
I mean, if they come back, if they come back to us at some point in the future and say, we made a boo-boo, and we can't park cars in here, can we have a variance?
You can't have a variance on the building code.
I vote it will be tear the building down.
No, 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 hold on a sec. This is not our jurisdiction, you cannot give a variance on the building code. This is a building code, you can't have a variance on that, so they have to comply.
My point is, if they come back to us in six months from now, and the building's all framed, and they say, hey, we made a mistake, we can't get the cars in the garage, can you give us an additional two feet of variance, because we built the garage too tall? I'm gonna say, no, tear the building down, I'm not giving you a variance.
No, Jimmy.
Here's the plan, drawn by that plan, that's we approved.
Listen, let me explain something quick. You can't give a variance on the building code, period. It means the building is unusable, period, if they don't comply. I've built a lot of buildings, I did a lot of commercial building, and I could really testify to this. When I, when a building like this go to the building department to get a building permit, it will have mechanical engineer, plumbing engineer, electrical engineer, HVAC engineer, lighting engineer, and structure engineer, and architect. So it will be six, seven plans. So when he goes to the building department, and believe me, those engineers, they're not gonna stamp these plans if they don't pass building codes. And-
I'm not talking about the building code, I'm talking about clearance for cars that need to have that place for access to park. That's the question I have.
But that's a building code, Charlie, inside the building. Yes, sir. Yes, Ken. Sorry.
I think this is, the issue is whether or not he'll have the parking spaces that are necessary to accommodate the use. So I think all you do is condition the special permit that they supply the certain number of parking spaces that they've shown on the plan, and not worry about the building code or other issues in design and the interior.
Right, there have to be usable parking spaces.
It has to be a certain number as well, too.
Right, if he uses one parking spaces, he's in trouble. And I don't think the architect, engineer can afford, can afford to do this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I? I agree with Mr. Rowley. It is not a building code issue. However, Mr. Rowley has chosen, his words carefully, he claims that I blocked the entrance to my own building. It's not the case. We redirected the entrance because of the change in grade that Mr. Rowley suggested. We didn't block the entrance. He also makes the ridiculous claim that I would build a parking garage and not be able to use it. I just don't think this should go on any further. I think that either due to infirmity, incompetence, malfeasance, name it what you will, there is no way that the design of the building is intended to park, and the design intent will be let cars come in. If there's a pipe in the way, it will be moved. We're not gonna come back to the board to raise the building. I don't wanna get into the actual structure, but post-tension concrete, it's a very thin structure. So he's just incorrect. Mine feed is plenty for our purposes. Oh, he would've designed it in a different manner, Mr. Chairman. And as far as the building size goes, it meets all the dimensional requirements of the code and bylaws of the town of Wareham.
We're not gonna discuss the size, it doesn't need a variance, we're not gonna discuss it. I mean, let the board, each one speak their mind, if they agree with it or they don't. We're not gonna say it's big, it's small, let every board member speak their voice. But how does the board feels about this, what I said, how we structure, if we go forward with a yes vote or a no vote, that has to be, that go the two together, the site plans only for intermediate care center? So it's not to be, it will be recorded, restated, so it cannot be used for anything else, period, unless it comes back for site plan. What do you think?
Give it that condition.
That makes, that makes sense? Okay, so, that being said, let's not even discuss that inside, because we don't understand it. We're gonna keep arguing all night, back and forth, we're not, none of us gonna have an answer. Unless you guys wanna get, ask for an extension, and ask some more professional people, let's concentrate on the outside. Let's go to J.C. Engineering, fill us in what you did, how do you answer, Mr. Rowley, let's concentrate on the site.
Yeah, thank you, Brian Wallace with J.C. Engineering. So we, you mentioned the sidewalk earlier before the rest of that discussion occurred. And I couldn't recall exactly what was stated at a previous meeting, that, you know, residents would use Route 6 sidewalk. I don't think this is the, and I'll let the applicant touch on this if he feels the need to, but I wouldn't expect residents to be walking on Route 6 for this type of building. And I also would say that the, this isn't a public building, you know, as if it was a store or something that people on the sidewalk would be using to get to. So that's the main reason we didn't include a sidewalk connection to the sidewalk on Route 6. So I wanted to just touch on that.
So you don't think a resident can, wants to walk and probably walk, pick up their grandkids across the street or something?
I mean, have, did you have any?
Yes, I do. Mr. Chairman, the site plan approval process is a good one, and we've tried to give you all the information you need for site plan approval. What I'm sure Brian's not aware of, and I am, and I've given you this code of regulations. It goes down even to, depending on the use, now you say it's an intermediate care center, but there are four levels of intermediate care. Depending on the level of intermediate care, there are certain rules and regulations that include site plan review by the state. So this is not the end of it. I should have put a car wash here, because it doesn't seem the last site plan review to got approved didn't have mast DOT curb cuts. I don't think they have their permits, did they, Mr. Rowley? I'm just asking you a direct question.
The what?
I don't know.
This case, not that case.
I don't know whether they've got them or not, I doubt that they've applied for them, because normally it doesn't get done until you get through site plan review here.
You can't go to state until we give you an okay or no.
Exactly. But Mr. Rowley, over and over again, is asking me to obtain those permits prior to site plan review.
That's not, that's not correct.
He said, you're gonna need to, he didn't say go get them, he said you're gonna need to get approval. I don't, I didn't hear him say, you have to go get them and come back.
I would never say that.
Okay.
He knows about it, of course. So-
Anyhow, as far as pathways within the site, yes, people are gonna use the sidewalk, I'm sure, to go back and forth, but we're talking about elderly people here, we're not talking about anything else. So the site is contained, and the pathways in the site are there. Getting to the sidewalk, I don't see that that is a problem, if somebody wants to use the sidewalk. In fact, that sidewalk is unusable because of all the roots and all the problems that are down there, which I intend to fix when I build the building. So I don't know what the issue is as far as site plan approval. The sidewalk is outside of the site, it's a public sidewalk, and it's a state sidewalk. So therefore, it meets the handicap requirements, and people can use that sidewalk. Once they leave the property, which is a 35, 40-foot walk, they have to go up or down that sidewalk. And I don't understand why it's part of my site plan review to the public sidewalk has to be. Now, we're saying, we're saying in response to these things, that they can use the sidewalk.
I'm gonna interrupt him again, all right?
Yeah, all right, let me.
I'm gonna interrupt you again.
Go right ahead. I appreciate it.
I, in all fairness, and I'll be frank, I think we've got a couple guys here that are both over 30. And when we get over 30, we, you know, we can get a little stuck in our ways. I'm over 32.
I realize that.
And, but, you're kind of, what's the word, deflection? The conversation was about a sidewalk within the site, getting access to the sidewalk outside the site. And you're making it sound like he's trying to review a public road. So let's, let's start paraphrasing, let's stop pointing fingers at each other. We wanna get this thing closed. I think the comment that Mr. Rowley made was that there was no way to get from the building to the sidewalk. Nothing to do with the condition of the sidewalk, with all the roots in the sidewalk, whether you need a 40-watt light bulb beside every bed. I don't think any of that was said. So, again, I think the word's called deflection, and I think somebody's really good at it, and I think I'd like to see it stopped.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me, let me ask something. Mr. Sam, right? I keep confusing Brian. How many times I know you, I still-
When they sign, go get it.
Brian, do you, in your firm, J.C. Engineering, can you certify that these plans are built properly for an intermediate care center? You guys can certify that?
Well, you know, I think, looking at it as a-
Did you, did you open a code book of intermediate, for instance, this, Mr. Mannix gave us this, this is a building code compliance. Did you open one like this for site plan, for intermediate care, and you built your site plan based on the code book for a site plan for intermediate care?
No, we did not.
Okay.
We did not have that book as part of our design process.
And why didn't you, if you build an intermediate care center?
I mean, the aspects of a site plan review, I mean, you know, I think we kinda touched on the fact that the interior aspects of the building, which I believe that kinda covers, aren't exactly part of what we're talking about tonight. So, you know, we based the site plan off standard engineering practice and, you know, the bylaws of the town. I think if the board wants to see a certain aspect of the site plan improved, I think we're more than happy to do that.
We don't know what we want, because we depend on professionals like you and him. We don't know. We just try to make the best out of it.
Right.
We assume you do it per code. Let's give you a small example. For instance, Toby House with a dairy model right now, the exit they built for the emergency, all this, I'm sure it's not like building a restaurant, some, the special, specific codes to build these ramps and these area, and the, like, the cul-de-sac or whatever for the ambulance, the certain codes when you deal with facilities like this, it's gotta be somewhere. I mean, I know it's gotta be somewhere, some codes to build these things. This is what we would like you as a professional to say, okay, these things were designed based on these standards. Can you, if we give an extension, I continue this, can you do this design, review the, a book, I'm sure it's somewhere? Because our bylaws talks about subdivisions, about restaurants, like how wide the road has to be, how wide the cul-de-sac, how wide the curb is in and out, I mean, does our bylaw talks about how wide the road has to be, or if it should be a sidewalk or not? We don't even know if intermediate care demands a sidewalk or not. So, but if you put your stamp it doesn't need, guess what? I'm going with your stamp, I don't care.
Yeah.
I just wanna talk to your office and say, "We stand by our plans," and I'd like to put it to bed and get it over with.
Yeah, I understand, and I mean, we'll be happy to review those codes that...
Maybe those codes have something for you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I don't wanna redirect anything, but I just wanna point out one fact, and I'll be quiet about it.
Yeah.
And maybe it'd be a solution that the board, we can give to the board. On the drawings that we have submitted, it clearly shows a crosswalk behind, on the side of the building.
Mr. Mannix, listen, I just wanna let you know, I'm not stuck on the sidewalk. One person says it needs a sidewalk, one person says it doesn't, one person says needs a half one. We need a person to stand up, say, "This is my stamp, and this is how it is." And we really, I don't think any of us cares, because like I said, we're not professionals. We want that professional opinion and say, "You know what? I stand behind my plans and my stamp, and there you have it." Because we could sit down here all day and make...
I agree.
Veronica. Next year.
Yeah.
Right. Let Veronica, she has good comments.
I have a question about...
I don't, Jimmy.
I have a question about what we're discussing, and if there's a way that we can incorporate it into any positive vote. What recourse would we have if the specific requirements of intermediate care for site plans that are not met, and they proceed with this project, and at a later date, let's say somebody looks in this book, and this was required, and it's not there, what recourse do we have?
It's their problem.
I would, through the chair, so when you're on the decision, that special permit, site plan review, I mean, it doesn't preclude all the other requirements, codes, environmental, so you're not liable.
We're not liable, and it's his problem. He has to rectify, or he's engineer.
I guess my question needs to be a little bit more specific. Who's gonna enforce that?
It would go to the building commissioner, it goes to Mr. Rowley during construction. Mr. Rowley only watched construction, but when he brings the whole plan to get a building code, the commissioner will review it. Most likely, he knows a lot, but when there's a stamp, he doesn't really look closer. And then when it goes to construction, believe me, there's not an engineer out there, you could pay him enough to do it, not right. There's no such, I believe they all do a good job, and nobody would deviate on the rules by hair. That's my belief. I never had engineer that make flaws plans.
If I may, through the chair, to answer the direct question, the book that I brought in is not building code. This is licensing requirements. So some of the issues that you rightly bring up, such as circulation in the site, are covered under the licensing requirements. It's not a building code, it doesn't go to the building commissioner, Mr. Chairman. It goes to the state licensing authority.
I understand.
And if the plans to be submitted, not these plans, do not meet the licensing requirement, no license is issued. So there's a, and it wouldn't, we wouldn't even come, if they only issued a license, we can't come before this board to ask anything. It's just with the state.
Right. So that's why I suggest that we would, I would like, I mean, like I said, it's been two years, I would like to cut a chalk, and if the board wishes, we grant it, because I know what's Mr. Mannix doing. I'm a businessman, I'm sure he's a businessman. He wants to get a pre-approval and go market this, and whoever jumps in and buy it or lease it from him will come back with the big plans, with the perfect designs, and go to the commissioner and get a permit. When they go to commissioner, and the commissioner look at it, say, "You know what? You're bumming, this is, needs a, needs a variance, this isn't..." For instance, say, when they go to an operator, say, "I need 10 parking spaces for ambulance." Okay, so the building inspector says, "Well, you need 10 parking spaces, you have a problem, you gotta go back to zoning." So I think it's, it does check and balance itself at the end, because it's all professional people. We're not building a shed here. These are all professional people, will be from start to end, all professional people. I wouldn't, personally, I wouldn't worry about it if we, like, draft the decision properly, and it's on him to build it properly or not. Yes.
Okay, so I'm good with that. My next question would be, I don't know specifically, as you stated, I don't think anybody on the board knows what the requirements are for this type of facility, but I know some of the things that I would like to see in most facilities, but this one in particular, and that has to do with sidewalks, which keeps being brought up, and movement on the outside of the building, that I don't see on the plan. So what, as a board, what authority do we have to say, we, you have to put in a sidewalk?
You can.
Okay, 'cause that, 'cause if it's not, I mean, it may not be a requirement of that book right there in front of you, but...
Right, you can. However, is it gonna stop, okay, sidewalk done, is this, does it? Are we done? I know, we're gonna go sidewalk, we're gonna something else, this and that, and it's not gonna end, because we're not professional. I would suggest, I would totally suggest, we give it one more hearing, and we promise tonight that next time we're gonna vote, end the story. Unless you guys wishes to vote tonight, that Mr. Brian, we go back to his firm and do some research on the intermediate care or the nursing home site plans, and come back with as much as notes he can, and we just, like, do the best we can, and whether vote for it or against it, and like I said, we make our draft very careful, we're all gonna when we, if we grant, we're all gonna read that decision very carefully. It's very important that the two go together. This is only for intermediate care center. Any other diversion from the plan, so say, they come with the operator, say, "I need another two extra parking," he's gonna come back for modification. And we just give it a shot like this, because, like I said, we...
I have a question.
Yeah.
What do we gain by continuing and not voting tonight?
Honestly, nothing.
Well, I'd like to...
I mean, this is up to the board. You make a motion to close, if there's a motion on the floor, let it be.
Well, there are a couple of items that I specifically would like to see on this, that I would just like to put out there.
Right.
Sidewalk, number one.
But basically, basically, the board, I know the details can be worked out, but I'm sorry, Richard, I'm looking here because that's the majority, I keep turning my back to you, and you don't have light.
It's dark over there in the corner anyway, you just keep hiding.
But the board wants to decide if they okay with the project. The details can be worked out with the engineers and the construction, whatever, but is the board is okay with the project?
But those details, if they're not a requirement of that book, wouldn't be put in if we don't say we want it in, correct?
Right, that's why we're gonna give Mr. Brian another chance to come back with some more stuff, and try to put a sidewalk to make Mrs. Devenese happy, maybe something else too. Mr. County, what else you like to say?
I'd just like to comment on, you know, 1542 relation of the building to the environment. You know, the thing is massive. It says, you know, "The proposal development shall visually relate to its environment. Consideration shall be given to the appropriate scale, massing height, and to ensure the architect shall be in harmony with the surrounding natural environment and neighborhood." That building does not. It does not fit in that environment, with all those houses and all that.
That's perfectly fine, and you could vote the way you wish in this. I think the bottom line is how we feel about the buildings. We're stuck on the details, details nothing. Apparently, we could see Mr. County say he doesn't like the building, so...
So you got one nay?
Yeah, for instance, you got a nay right there.
You got a nay. Did you get four yays? I'm ready to vote. I don't care if we vote tonight or 20 weeks from tonight, I know how I'm voting. I don't need to hear any more testimony, I don't need to hear any more bickering, I don't need to hear anything. I know how I feel about this project.
Well, if you...
I'm trying to get clarity.
Yes. May I, may I please?
All right, we're back at it. So Jimmy, is that a way the applicant was asking to maybe resend the vote and give him a chance to come back with different plans? Would you, would anybody would like to make a motion to resend the vote?
I made a motion, it was voted on. If somebody else wants to make a motion, let them. I'm not gonna play Jimmy the dunce for anybody.
Okay, anybody would like to make a motion to resend the vote?
No.
I would like it, if anyone, I'd like to make a motion to resend the vote, that I have a second.
I have a second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Simple majority or supermajority?
No, simple majority to resend.
I'll give you a yea.
So you yes with us?
Three and two.
Okay, so we resend the vote, so... So we go back to continue public hearing, you come with more evidence.
We closed the public hearing.
Huh?
We closed the public hearing, no.
Well, we resend our votes to reopen.
Which vote was rescinded?
Which one did we rescind?
Do we reopen the public?
To reopen the public.
Did we reopen the public hearing, or did we just reopen the meeting?
We resent, to reopen the public hearing, to resend our vote.
I don't understand, just because the client didn't like the outcome that we're rescinding a little...
Well, we don't have to say yes, but I get majority to reopen it. I mean, I totally understand you don't understand, but apparently, we have three people say we'd like to reopen the public hearing.
Doesn't mean it's gonna pass next week either, it just means that they're gonna...
We've been doing this since September 23rd, it's been over a year.
I totally understand, but that's not what the votes say. Totally understand. So the public hearing is reopened?
No, we voted on rescinding, I think, the other vote, I didn't...
I think the vote was to rescind.
To resend the vote. Now you need a motion to, Counselor, why don't you direct us? Do we need another, we need a motion to reopen. Okay, can I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
I have a second.
Are you making the motion?
I'll make a motion, we send...
To reopen the public? Do I have a second on Rich's motion?
Yeah, sure.
Second by Jim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Abstain, so reopened. Okay, let's go back to argument.
Mr. Chairman, I have a request, oh, that could be loud, I'm sorry.
Yes.
A question, what's the point of going back to argument when, if we say no, it's gonna be opened again?
For more, more evidence.
Okay.
We didn't have, like, if, like, let me, if two of us, if three of you says, "No, it's dead," unfortunately, fortunately for them, unfortunately for the opposition, it carries. So that's the process.
I think we should get counsel advice on this.
We, well, to get counsel, we need an extension. To get counsel advice, we need this extension.
So, I'm willing to discuss if...
But she's a counsel, are we allowed to do this or not?
You're allowed to, I mean, I'm not counsel for the town, so you're well within your right to request that, but you can re, there was a motion that was dead on the floor, but that doesn't mean that the site plan is automatically denied. It was just that too denied, it doesn't.
Veronica has something, I think, that she wants to add.
I'm willing to give clarity and my reasoning for saying no, but I think I was clear from the very get-go of this project, and there's been a lot of about, and Chris cited what it says in the bylaws, and how it fits into the neighborhood, it's huge for the site. I mean, we just keep going over these same things, and really, putting a bump in or doing a little tiny thing to the building, and it hasn't changed in its massiveness, it's not gonna change...
I totally understand, but that's not what we're arguing. This is what we're gonna do. We're gonna ask town council if our process was defective or right. If the town council says what we just did is defect, is wrong, that's mean the no is the stance, that it denied. If town council, what we, says what we did is right, we continue with our second hearing. How's that sound? That make sense?
Yeah, I'd be happy to hear what he says.
Right, and like I said, if he says we're wrong, it's dead. If he says we're right, next time, when you gonna come see us?
December 8th, I believe, is your next hearing?
And come with a lot of ammunition, plans, whatever you can, so, okay, so this, can I have a motion to continue if our theory is right? Motion?
Subject to opinion of council.
Correct.
I move to continue until the next meeting.
December 8th to 55-21. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Deny.
Abstain? Okay, so we'll see on, if, unless town council says it's defective, we'll see you on the 8th.
Should I assume if I don't hear it's defective, that we're moving forward?
Yes.
Right, if he says we're, what we did is right, we're moving forward. If he says no, it's dead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very much. All right, sorry for the delay, we'll promise you we'll go fast now. All right, public hearing, 56-21, Doobie, special permit and site plan review for Ford Recovery Road, Mariwan Establishment.
Does this need to be read in?
Yeah. It's reading it.
Yeah, okay, 56-21. Let's get these off the table, 56-21.
Yeah, good idea.
I always fold my plans outward so I can read that strip.
Yes, have fun reading this.
Good to you. Good deal.
I'm gonna give that to you, 'cause wherever you put in that...
Yeah, they're all gonna go together, yep, one, two, we had three. Where's the other one?
It may be behind you, I'm not sure.
I gotta get that out, but I wanna get these, I'll get it out. Give everybody a chance to spread their wings a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, is there anything you need me for?
No, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you. If these gentlemen need 53G, we'll let you know. I think they do, it's a site plan.
Oh, I haven't seen any site plan at all.
All right, we'll make a quick, I think, thank you. Thank you, Charlie. Have a good night.
Thanks, Joe, good night.
The box, the left box on the other chair.
Which one?
Yeah, it should be 56-21.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on October 27th, 2021, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 56-21 for a special permit, site plan review from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320, and Article 15, Section 1520 of the Wareham Zoning Bylaw to DB Delivery, Mass. LLC, DBA Doobie. Care of Philip H. Massey?
Mackey.
Mackey, sorry.
No worries.
Esquire of 1256 Washington Street, Norwood, Mass. 02062, seeking to create a new marijuana processing facility located at Four Recovery Road, Wareham, Mass. Assesses map 108, 1006B in the industrial zoning district. Four Recovery Road.
There used to be the old daycare. Very well, name and address, name and address for the records, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Phil Mackey, Mackey and Mackey, 1256 Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts. It's Councilman Ford and on behalf of the applicant.
Joseph Rubin, 1801 South Los Anega Boulevard, Los Angeles, California.
Justin Kennedy, 134 Sandwich Road, Wareham, Massachusetts.
Okay, so we make it very minimum pain. Sure, tell us quickly what are you doing and what's the plan?
So, minimum pain, I submitted a memorandum which actually goes through probably maximum pain. So per your, your request, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask to be put in the record, but I'm just gonna talk you through the project rather than go through 18 pages. So basically, as you can see on the map there, our site is just under an acre and it's the corner of Kendrick Road and Recovery Road. As was mentioned, it was an old daycare center. It's actually owned by the town and we've entered into a lease with the Wareham Redevelopment Authority for this property. We are not proposing any construction whatsoever on the outside of the building. We are not reconfiguring the parking lot. We are not doing anything to the outside other than making it look better. But all of the changes there are cosmetic in nature, not structural. The business itself at this location is a delivery-only marijuana use, so there is no public interaction with the ongoings here. So it's not a retail establishment. Guests are not coming here. The public is not invited. So literally, it is only the actual employees that are going to be working out of this site. We are here for the special permit because that is what was required under the zoning bylaw, that basically your board has a jurisdiction for that. The Reader's Digest version is the sport of selectmen have entered into a host community agreement with us. The Wareham Redevelopment Authority has put right in its lease that it believes that this is an appropriate location for this use. Certainly, it's up to you to make sure that we meet the special permit criteria. And again, as we have no outside traffic, we have actually minimal employees on the site, we really do think that this is going to just blend into the rest of the industrial park. DB Delivery is actually putting a sizable amount of money into the building to actually make it look better. So we think at the end of this process, if your board chooses to approve our two requests, that the corner and kind of the entrance to the industrial park is gonna look better than it has in quite a while. As far as site plan goes, initially, when we entered into negotiations with the town, DB Delivery anticipated operating off of Tow Road for a variety of reasons. That didn't happen. But in the discussions with the building commissioner, all three of the uses, and I'm jumping ahead to the next hearing because it's same cast of characters but for a different location. Basically cultivation, manufacturing, and delivery were all happening on one site. And when you add up the parking spaces required, it required 17 or 18. In total transparency, at this point, we believe the site actually only requires seven. But with some luck, we will expand, so we decided that we should go through site plan at this point. Because basically, the difference between the seven and going over 10 is two delivery vehicles, because you end up with four more employees plus two spots for the delivery vehicles. You get over 10 fairly quickly. So rather than hamstringing the operation from the outset, we figured we would just apply or continue along with site plan approval. Again, nothing changes as far as ingress egress. To the best of our knowledge, there haven't been any problems with traffic accidents or safety. A good portion of your site plan review talks about sidewalks, streets, and subdivisions, none of which are happening here. So I, I could continue on going how most of, most of the.
No, let me ask you, make it easy for you. The, are you blocking the parking lot there?
No.
Okay, so the pre, the, the site plan that's approved there, how many parking spaces there for the daycare?
There is no striping at all whatsoever in that parking lot right now.
Right, did you review the, the plan that was approved before?
Yes, that, that actually is it.
Right, but how many pockets, you didn't see the permit that was granted back then for that?
We, we can put 17 there in accordance with the zoning bylaw.
It's required 17 or you could put 17?
We can put 17. Right now, it's required for nine.
How many your, how many your business needs?
Nine.
You need nine parking spaces?
Yes.
So why you need a site plan review?
We don't accept that. We expect to get two more delivery vehicles, hopefully in the not-too-distant future. And so.
What, how did the building inspector, commissioner came up with the idea that you need, you have more than them parking spaces with the, with the, with the square footage of the building?
In total honesty, Mr. Chairman, when we first sat down, as I said before, with the three Tow Road, we had 18, required 18. And we subsequently modified the HCAs to not go to Tow Road and split the operation between this site and the Little Brook Road site. And until I actually started putting together the memorandum in front of you and doing the math, we all basically made the assumption, as do, I believe, the building inspector, that what we needed before is what we need now. So we're happy with draw the site plan request, but if we continue on with the site plan, that gives us some flexibility to add a couple more delivery vehicles, which we would like.
All right, go ahead. You wanna say something?
Oh, sure, yeah, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it. Uh, yeah, just for clarification, the HCA that was initially granted on Tow Road contemplated three different forms of operations, cultivation, manufacturing, and delivery.
Yeah.
So we, you know, that obviously would necessitate more employees, more parking spots, and because we've moved or bifurcated, so to speak, the operations into two, it will decrease the parking load, so to speak, on, on the individual sites.
And do you anticipate to make site plans with a land surveyor or a professional engineer? You gotta come with plans, with show on the parking and the landscape and all that.
We hadn't planned on it, to be honest with you.
Well, that's what site plan is, that you have to submit that. If you, if you require the site plan review, you need the plans. We cannot approve a site.
Then I guess respectfully, I would withdraw my request for site plan review.
Okay, but what's before us, the, you gotta go back to the building commissioner
Correct.
and correct your numbers, and he has to strike the Article 15 from us.
Yes.
Right now, in front of us, you need a site plan. If you could convince him, whatever, add your numbers, say you don't need the 15, then you're good, you're golden. So, uh, so let me give you, I'm gonna pass it quick by the board, and I'm gonna give you your options right now, and then I'll pass it. So you go back to the commissioner, if he, if he feels you need it, then you gotta get a engineer with the parking lot, with the shrubs, with the lights. A site, a, a professional engineer or land surveyor would know how to do this. And you're gonna have to open a 53G account with the town for a consultant independent to comment on your plans. Once you do this, you come back before us and we go, and, and then we'll act, okay? Unless you could convince the commissioner that you don't need them parking spaces, then we act what we have. That make sense?
If that's the practice of Wareham, we will follow.
It's not only Wareham, it's that, it's that state regulation that's how we have to follow.
With respect, most towns for a change of occupancy wouldn't require all of that. We're not doing anything to this site. We are limiting, changing tenants.
I, I totally understand, but what's be, what's in front of us, we have to act what.
And that's fine.
Do you understand what I'm saying? You go scratch it, we're good.
Okay.
I'm gonna start by Chris as, as quick as we can. How you feel about this project and what do you think?
Uh, I'm all set. How many employees are gonna be at this site?
Three, and then six delivery drivers.
Six delivery guys. I'm okay.
You're good. Are you okay with what I said, and if, if they comply, we're good to go? Okay, Veronica.
I have no questions.
No question. Jimmy?
I don't understand. Are you wholesaling?
No, this is direct to consumer, but delivery only.
So the price structure would be a retail price structure, but it's not a retail establishment?
Correct.
Okay, well, if that's not as clear as mud, I don't know what is.
Well, it's, all of this is regulated by the state regardless, right? So we don't.
I just don't, I, I just, I know that there's been other sta, you know, it's like, I just, it looks to me, I'll be very honest, it's me, it looks like a loophole. We got this stupid bylaw that I've hated since the first time I read it about marijuana establishments in this town. And we've had people denied the ability to move. We've got an, we've got a, a retail establishment being run on Main Street, and the whole town hates it being there, but they can't move because we've got a stupid bylaw. And along comes Doobie, and they say, no, we're not gonna do retail, we're gonna do wholesale. We're gonna get ice cream trucks, we're gonna load them up with marijuana, and we're gonna drive around the neighborhood, ring the bell, sell it.
No, no, I don't, the wholesale to, to retailer, right?
Right.
Well, no, he said it's not a retail, but it's a retail price, so, as I said, it's clear as mud. So I'm, I'm not opposing you, I'm just saying that it seems something, something smells funny to me, and I'm not saying it's Doobie that smells funny, and, and I, and I drive around this town of Wareham, and there's a lot of things that smell funny.
All right, let's, let's get Sonna clear. What do you do with your product?
People will either call in or go on the internet and order. We will then bring it to their house.
And this is allowed in the state of Massachusetts?
Yes, and it is a specifically different use than retail by the state law.
Okay.
Retail involves people coming into the store, buying.
So you, you buy the marijuana or you plant it?
In this particular use, for this hearing, we're buying it.
You buy it from, from, from a grower?
In the next hearing, we're gonna be growing it at a different light.
Right, so, okay, in this one, you buy it from a grower?
Yes.
You make a cupcake or whatever, candy, where do you make it?
We're not making or producing anything at the site, so you're buying from different cultivators around the state, and then you're delivering directly to a, a customer's house. So if you, for instance, Mr. Chairman Partook, and you didn't wanna go to a dispensary, you could order the product online and it would deliver it straight to your, your home.
It's like Doobie dash.
It's like a, it's like.
And dash allowed, so why the whole fuss about retail stores?
That's my, that's my point. They can't, Veralife can't go to that building and operate there because we've got a flawed bylaw, but Doobie can come along and run ice cream trucks out of that location, sell the same product, just deliver it.
Wow, hey, good for you.
I'm, I'm just, you know.
We don't make the laws.
I'm just, I'm not saying that I agree or disagree with your operation, I'm saying that our bylaw is flawed.
When did state pass that?
Uh, it really started, or they announced the regulations during COVID. Uh, it's really when this all started formulating.
And you think it's gonna continue after COVID or it's gonna stop?
Well, no, it's a full business now.
And there's some other places in the state they do that?
Well, sure, yeah.
You open the floodgates, you can't put the water back behind the dam.
Well, yeah, down the road, there's another establishment in the town that also has a very similar.
In Wareham, they deliver? Which one?
Well, they, they haven't started operating yet, but they have a very.
The one in industrial park?
Trade routes, trade winds, they have a.
They gonna deliver too?
Actually, yes.
So you could call, say, send me a joint and you bring it home?
It's not as simple as that, it's like, you know.
They don't smoke, it's, I don't even know if you call it a joint.
It's, uh, it's not as a, as.
I should.
It's not as simple as that, you know, there, there's lots of, you gotta check ID.
But you know what, hey, good for you, if the state allows you, this is not our business. So Rich, what do you think?
On what?
We, we're not making the laws now, we follow. I know Jimmy is frustrated, but this is not our problem.
It doesn't make any sense, but.
It doesn't, but if it state allows it.
But if they, if they go by the guidelines in the state and everything.
You're good. All right, anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of this project, in favor? Okay, none. Anyone against? Yes, can I come forward? Okay, just have a seat there. You could sit over there. Okay, or, or take that, what, whichever you want, whatever you want.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just get this so it's on record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Richard Burke. I'm a lawyer in New Bedford with Borahgard, Burke &amp; Franco. I've been hired to represent the Fielding family, which is opposed to this petition. The Fieldings live at 2432 Cranberry Highway. They're on your Butters list, so they're nearby. They're across the street from Kendrick Road from where this site would be. They're opposed to this business being located there. They're concerned about a marijuana delivery operation, what effect that would have on their and value of their property, their use and enjoyment of their property. They're also concerned about traffic. There, apparently, there hasn't been any traffic study done. This is the only entrance into the industrial park there, and I'm told that there often are tractor-trailers that cannot negotiate the turn to go down into Kendrick Road. We're concerned that adding back-and-forth constant delivery drivers will exacerbate that problem. And without a traffic study, you really don't know how much it's gonna make it worse. We, you know, there, we haven't heard anything about signs or security, but those are also concerns. Apparently, there are a number of marijuana establishments that are located nearby, and I think this applicant has the next hearing for a different location at 10 Little Brook Road. My client would much rather see, as apparently they may have been contemplating at one point, that they run their delivery operation out of the place where they're gonna be cultivating or, or growing the marijuana, which is at 10 Little Brook Road, which is the next hearing that you have. That's what we would like to see done. We don't think that this location is consistent with Section 1460 of your bylaw. It will adversely affect the neighborhood. This is where the Fieldings live. We don't think it's an appropriate location. We do think it will be a hazard to vehicles. As I said, there, it already is a bad intersection. And we don't think it's substantially benefits the town, in fact, it's a detriment. I guess in concluding, if the board is inclined to, to grant this, notwithstanding what I just said, the applicant has said that they're going to be permanently restricted to delivery only. They will never turn this into a retail operation where customers will come and buy and at onsite and then leave. So if you are inclined to grant it, we're asking that you permanently, you, you, you put a condition on the special permit that it never be able to be turned into a retail store where customers would, would come and buy, and that it be limited to only delivery. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Right now, the, what we call a dispensary, that's a retail, we only have three in Wareham, and the permit's already taken. So ultimately, say one, one dispensary closes, and they have to come up with a new li, uh, application to retail. You know what I'm saying? Right now, these licenses have been taken. Talking about traffic, are you, are you like, uh, counsel, are you like, like, like domino speeds of come and go or like?
No, we, we aren't. That, that will be scheduled out. We are trying, we, it is in our best interest to minimize the trips in and out, so again, we will maximize the product that is put on a delivery vehicle. It actually will be completely unmarked because the state requires that, so it won't be an ice cream truck that says, "Buy your butt here." And the, that's the job.
And that's the job mainly of the three people, to schedule the ins and outs, keep it off of peak hours. And we don't anticipate, honestly, near the traffic that was there with the daycare.
I do understand, sir, counselor, about the. When they did the road there, there is a little problem with tractor trailers, but that's the industrial park, unfortunately, that's how it is. And apparently, it's up to the state to fix that corner. I don't know what kind of impact would make on that facility. How many trips a day you think you'll have? What do you think?
I mean.
At the most.
I gotta comment on that. If they're gonna have six delivery vehicles, the amount of pot you could stick in six Volkswagens.
Only three.
Could probably, well, you said six earlier.
Well, then we determine.
We're acting on six, I believe, aren't we?
No, you'll be acting on three pending.
Three delivery vehicles? The amount of pot you could put in three Volkswagens would probably keep three drivers busy all day.
Yes.
Right, but they're not in and out.
Coming and going.
No, and.
You could put, you could put 10 or 15 pounds of marijuana in a Prius and you're gonna get a lot of Doobies out of that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you have a, like, time for delivery versus like, so when the order was placed, when are you delivering? Like, how quick is this?
That's a great question.
Is there a Domino's, like, if you don't get it in 30 minutes, it's free?
That's something to take into consideration for customer service. But customers are able to schedule their delivery in advance, which is typically what we prefer so that we can actually stack orders into a vehicle at one time, so they're not coming in and out 100 times a day. So we would rather a car go out and leave what we call the station once in a day with, you know, the orders that are allocated to that specific vehicle to minimize traffic and nuisance on neighbors, et cetera. And if I may, talk about some of the other points that the counselor addressed with respect to signage. We don't plan on putting any signage up. The goal is not to be an eyesore or stick out at all. We'd like to put flowers in front of the facility and really just beautify it a little bit, but. And then in terms of his statement about the dispensaries, Mr. Chairman, correct, the dispensary licenses have been given out already. But in addition to that, I believe we're within the buffer zone, right, of that rule that you were talking about with respect to the next dispensary that's just over there. So it wouldn't be able to turn into a retail facility.
Under our current bylaw.
Under your current 1500 buffer. So that is.
Well, there's a allowed use for that, if one dispensary.
They can't be within 1500 feet of trade routes.
Oh, yeah, there's another one, right.
They're practically a butters.
We're practically, exactly. So, you know, that isn't contemplated, allowed, et cetera.
But anyway, for, let's say that one closes and it's gone somewhere else. If they're gonna open dispensary, they have to come back for a whole new hearing. Regarding, the gentleman was concerned about security and fencing. These things, sir, will be, it's regulated by the state. I'm sure they're gonna want cameras, security, doors, vestibules, safes. I've seen one getting built, it's just crazy how they do them.
Sir.
So, sir, let me ask you something. You totally against it or if they do something to your liking, you okay with it? I mean, if they do the proper fencing, the proper landscaping, with anything you dead sent, you dead up, like, against it? Or if there's any contemplation, that's something they could do to make you happy as a neighbor?
Well, I think my client is just opposed to having a marijuana operation across the street, especially one that's being set up by the town. It just seems wrong to them. But they would be more opposed, certainly, if it turned into something bigger, which I think they're concerned about, that the delivery turns into retail or laws change.
Definitely is not in front of us right now.
I understand that, but, so that's why I concluded by saying that if they're willing to say that they have no intention and it will never be that, put that as a condition so they can't come back and say, "We changed it."
We can do this, however, a different applicant comes in, it'll be different. Do you understand what I'm saying? Because it's an allowed use.
Well, it's not allowed unless you give them a special permit.
Right.
So if you put a condition on the special permit that limits the type of use, I think you could do that.
Okay, we could do such thing.
In other words, put a condition on the special permit that this is a permit for delivery only and the applicant has agreed they're not going to turn it into a retail establishment.
All right, if the board goes that way, very well, thank you. Anyone else wanna speak against this project? I hear none. So I guess, well, we're gonna leave it tonight because it's getting late. You're gonna go back to the inspector like we said?
Yes.
If he says no, you need more than 10 parking spaces. You gotta find a engineer to do a site plan. You're gonna need lighting plan, fencing plan, whatever the state code tells you to do. Show us the fence, the cameras, the shrubs, the lights, the parking marking, the handicap, whatever the regulation of this facility has to be. And you have to open a 53G account with town, you see Mr. Shaheen right there. You put some money, and I don't know, I'll tell you how much for reviewing. So you have to pay somebody to review your work, unfortunately. That being said, I'll give you something to do until you come back next time.
Sure.
So December 8th, is that good for you?
That's fine.
Okay, can I have a motion continue?
So moved.
I didn't think we voted for that on December 8th, right?
No, 15.
We're making that motion right now.
15, no, no, the 15 we didn't accept, but 8 is a regular meeting.
15 was the one that we said no to, the 8th, we're open for business.
Oh, so we're open, I thought we shot the whole thing down, okay.
Can I have a motion?
So the 8th is open, but the 15 is not.
Right. Motion to continue, 56-21, for recovery route till December 18.
So moved.
I have a motion by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. So we see you on December 8th with answers, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, 57-21, Doobie, again, for 10 Littlebrook Road.
I want these things back and then I wanna.
Right, just put them back.
Yeah, thank you. Is this the same thing that we just?
What are you gonna do with that?
Okay, that's why I don't wanna, that's why I don't wanna.
Yeah, that's not gonna get signed today, neither this one, I guarantee you.
Yeah, it's gonna be the same issue. It's gonna take a minute to interview us.
Okay.
That's the new one, this is the old one, okay. So now we want, oh, thank you, 57-21. Is this the old one?
I don't know, I'm just gonna get back.
Yep, gotcha, bring it in here. Thank you, sir. Sonia will appreciate the fact that we didn't mix these up.
We just blame Aaron.
Oh, you don't get blamed for everything? Come on, man. I thought that was what your title was.
I pushed it off the counter.
Oh, there you go, smart kid. Until Ken's not there anymore, then you're gonna be in trouble.
That's true.
Here, while I'm, here's two of these. Here's two of these. I feel like Perry Como. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on October 27th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. To consider, petition number 57-21 for a special permit, slight to end review from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320 and Article 15, 1520 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to DB Delivery, Mass. LLC, DBA Doobie, care of Philip H. Mackey.
There you go.
Sorry.
No problem.
Hey, I was born with, as an Akabachi, I mean, how do you think they slaughtered that?
I'm sure you've dealt with the same thing.
Since kindergarten. Sorry, Attorney Mackey. Of 1256 Washington Street in Norwood, Mass. 02062, seeking to create a new marijuana processing facility located at 10 Littlebrook Road, Wareham, Mass. That appears on Assessors Map 89, Lot 2/E in the Industrial Zoning District.
All right, let's hear it again, name and address for the record.
Sure. Phil Mackey, 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 1256 Washington Street in Norwood, Massachusetts. This is counsel four and on behalf of the applicant.
Joseph Rubin, 1801 South Los Anacostas Boulevard, Los Angeles, California.
Justin Kennedy, 134 Sandwich Road, Wareham, Massachusetts.
Okay, so let's hear it.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, we'll just start off with, we agree for this case for everything we just dealt with on the last. Again, we're here in site plan. We had anticipated a larger number, but when you actually look at the 10 employees that are going to be operating here, that requires seven parking spaces. So I will have the same discussion on this project with the building commissioner. And if he deems it so, we will withdraw the site plan. If he does not, then you will have the same list of deliverables for this case as the last.
All right, where is his letter, Jimmy?
Say that again, that's the guy that I ordered, looking at the same thing.
That's right here.
It's the exact same letter with a different address.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask?
Yes.
You're saying it's the same situation, but if you have a showroom, what I see from here.
We don't.
Oh, well, doesn't that say showroom?
It does.
Okay. So I was just wondering, because that would just seem to me like you were bringing more public in.
We are not.
Okay.
So what's this one? This is agriculture?
Let me explain. I was trying to get the administration stuff out of the way.
Okay.
But maybe have jumped the gun. So basically, what we are proposing, this structure currently or had been used by New England Baskets and they did have a showroom and this is their plan, basically. Again, we are leasing the property from the landlord, so nothing is happening on the outside. Not changing the parking, not changing the building on the exterior. And that's pretty much the sum and substance for the outside. On the inside, the area that's marked warehouse roughly is going to be the cultivation operation. So basically, an indoor greenhouse, which is where the product will be grown. And the areas marked office and showroom are just offices. Exactly like the last use, this is not open to the public. There is no ability, well, not legal ability, without us escorting them off the property for someone to walk in and go, hey, can I look at your stuff? Nope, can't, that is not allowed. So the only traffic from this facility will be for the 10 workers. And as we do not have a third-party delivery license, we're not actually allowed to bring our product from here to the other location that we were just discussing. So there will be a third-party transporter, which is a whole different licensing scheme with the state that will move the things we grow and manufacture here to the delivery where it can be packaged and sent out to the consumer. So again, there isn't any pedestrian traffic, there isn't any customer traffic. And that's kind of the part and parcel of what's going on here. There's gonna be significant interior renovations. And there's also a garage currently on the site that we're not planning on doing anything with, but it is there. And I would ask for questions, I guess, at this point.
All right, very well. So this is like the last one, we acted on like travel, just strictly agriculture. I hear these people waiting in the bag, so quick comments before we send this gentleman.
This is the same thing as what we did at Jordan Plaza?
Yes, like, just strictly agriculture.
But we're to the same situation with the site plan.
Right.
Did you get your hoisting agreement too? You get your hoist agreement?
Yes, sir, we do.
So, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
So, did I hear correctly that you can grow it, but you can't deliver it? Even though you're a delivery company, you can't deliver the product you grow to your delivery site? You have to hire somebody else to come take your stuff. You grow it, then you pay somebody else to come put it in their Volkswagen and bring it over to your facility? And you take it out of their Volkswagen and you put it in your building? And then you take it out of your building and put it in your Volkswagen and go deliver it?
That is correct.
And that's probably a state of Massachusetts regulation and you probably can't handle your own product, is that it?
Without going through a totally separate licensing procedure, which at some point.
You guys have just elected not to have that license or?
I could be mistaken, I don't know if the town of Wareham actually.
The town of Wareham allows it, it's just something we haven't gone after yet.
We haven't applied for that HCA, so that would be another HCA process, which we could theoretically do in the future, which would allow us to move product from one licensed facility to another, to another licensed facility.
But your delivery vehicles from the industrial park on Cranberry Highway couldn't go and pick them up?
Correct.
That's a third, that's considered a third-party.
Right, absolutely.
It's not a third-party, it requires a third-party.
Correct, and product also has to leave this facility, it has to go to a testing facility first so that it can be tested appropriately.
If you give the state a chance, they'll make it so that it's more profitable to sell the stuff illegally than it is legally. Thank you. That's the end of my questions.
All right, Richard. Anything?
So I just, no, I'll wait until the end as far as, because we get to add stipulations to it. It's a special permit, that's right?
Right.
Okay, so I'll wait until the end.
And the public, anyone want to speak in favor of this project? Anyone against? Okay, that being said, same thing, you gotta go back.
Yep.
And if that's the matter, but let me get the feel of the board. Are you, are you, are you guys okay with the idea of the agriculture there?
It's industrial, I'm fine with it.
You're fine with it? Okay, very well. So it looks good, if you comply and everything, you're looking good. So can we have a motion to continue till December 8th, 57-21? So I have a motion by Jim to continue 57-21, 10 Littlebrook Road, till December 8th, 2021. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain. So we'll see you on the December 8th with answers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm too tired, Jim, I'm not gonna go back.
58-21, Reed.
Get it home with you?
Variances, 26 Highland Road.
No, I'm too tired, I'm not doing anything.
I know. I gotta travel 22 hours tomorrow. 22-hour flight. Tomorrow.
Reconstruct. And is that from this one we just did?
Yeah.
Anything else on the table? That's bylaws up there?
Yeah, this is mine, yep.
Okay. Just wanna get the folder squared away before I go over to 58-21 Reed. There are reeds on a marijuana plant and they grown on Highland Road, but they call it.
Yeah, okay, Jimmy.
Is that a kind of a reed?
No.
Oh. Hi, Mr. Reed, Water Department, right? Back in the day?
I used to be.
Long time, yeah, I remember.
Long time ago.
Long time, yeah. Wow. How you doing, good?
I'm doing okay.
Good, yeah.
If you had more time, I was gonna comment on some of your other, other characters that were in here, but we don't have that kind of time.
The Water Department. Okay, one, two, you and.
You don't have half-size plans, would anyone want half-size plans, Mr. Chairman?
You have one?
I have several.
Yeah, just pass them, please.
Go ahead, confuse me with paperwork. You wanna see this big monster thing without mugging?
I don't want a big monster.
No.
Is this the same thing?
Yes, it is, sir.
If we don't need it, we won't pull it out of the folder, thank you.
Thank you.
Back to crooning. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on October 27th at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. To consider, petition number 58-21 for variances from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628 and Article 6, Table 622, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Robert and Deborah Reed of 26 Highland Road, Wareham, Mass. Proposing to raise and reconstruct the existing dwelling located at 26 Highland Road, Wareham, Mass. That appears on Assessors Map 61, Lot 1142, in the Wareham Village 2 zoning district.
I don't need one.
Okay, name and address for the record.
Bob Rogers, GAF Engineering, 266 Main Street.
Mr. Reed, your name.
Bob Reed, 26 Highland Road, Wareham, Mass.
Deborah Reed, 26 Highland Road, Wareham, Mass.
Okay, just a few words, Mr. Reed or ma'am, you could tell us what you're doing and you could pass it to the engineer.
Okay. What we are planning to do is to actually demo the existing dwelling. What we are planning to do is to actually demo the existing dwelling on my...
Look, the garage is going too.
Yes, the garage is going too. On the narrative, I state various items, the foundation, the walls. It's an old building, about a hundred and ten years old. And so we want to make it a more modern building and more user-friendly, let's put it that way, a little bit bigger, more amenities, and definitely more energy efficient.
Okay, very well. Bob, you want to tell us then?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Reed did submit this application, he prepared all the information. He, he has a very nice explanation of why the house is the size that it is, you know, based on certain features within the house, modern features. You have a letter from Dave Raquina, the building commissioner, that explains the non-compliance, which is limited to the floor area requirement and the building area, total building coverage. So in, in this zone, you're allowed a fifty percent total lot coverage, but only a twenty percent building coverage. And so on the plan, on, in the zoning data, you can see the specific numbers. The building coverage is at fourteen-point-eight percent, which is currently compliant under the twenty percent, and the proposed building coverage is thirty-two-point-four percent. And so that's considered a straight-up variance. Mr. Reed, in his letter, has expounded on the, the shape and the topography of the lot, the soils, which are very excellent, and, and so then the other, the other issue would be floor area ratio. The stipulation is seventeen percent, the zoning commissioner explains that it can go to nineteen percent. But to be restricted to nineteen percent when you can have a total lot coverage of fifty percent creates a hardship for Mr. Reed in his attempt to reconstruct this brand-new modern building, which will fit within all of the setbacks, and, and the total impervious surface stays below forty percent. So he's very much in compliant with the setbacks. In fact, there's a encro, not an encroachment, but there's non-conformance with the existing garage, which would be raised, and so the new structure would be fully compliant with the setbacks and well under the total impervious surface. And so, you know, we feel that it is a hardship if he was held to strict compliance with the floor area ratio and with the amount of building coverage. And I'll just leave it.
Okay, very well. I'm assuming you're building a ranch, right?
No.
You're building two-story?
This is two-story.
Okay, I don't...
You want to see this?
No, I don't...
It's like a bungalow type.
All right, I want to stop by, Chris. Do you have a question?
No, actually, I don't have any questions right now.
Veronica?
I'm trying to understand the hardship a little bit. It always sounded like you're saying that the way the bylaw is written has created the hardship. Is that right?
Well, what I'm saying is that strict adherence to the twenty percent total building coverage and this nineteen percent floor area ratio does present hardship. It, 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 it doesn't line up with the allowance to have fifty percent total coverage. On this lot, with the shape of the lot and the fact that it's a corner lot, he doesn't need much of a driveway. He's eliminating the swimming pool, he's eliminating the, the non-compliance with the garage setback to the rear lot line. And so, you know, he, like I said, there are, well, I guess I don't need to say any more than that. You know, the hardship would be the imposition of, you know, nineteen percent floor area, you know, which don't have the, you know...
That's stinking bylaw.
So the nineteen percent is based on the existing structure that you have, right? I think, because I mean, I reviewed this a little bit before, and I think...
Nineteen percent is, is what Mr. Raquina says is the maximum allowed in this zone under the bylaw. And the current house for, for, for building coverage is, is fourteen-point-eight. I'm sorry, it's the floor area ratio that he is saying. Let's go look at his letter.
The thing that I don't like about our FAR bylaw, if you can't... I'll speak louder, I don't want to get closer to the mic, it's got germs on it. The thing I don't like about our bylaw, for the record, for anybody watching or in the audience, is floor area ratio is based on multiple stories. So you could build a one-story building and have twelve-hundred square feet and be okay by our bylaw, but if you put a second story on it, now you're at twenty-four-hundred square feet, and all of a sudden, you're not okay anymore. Which to me is very inconsequential. When you think about it, the footprint is the footprint, whether it's one story tall or three stories tall, floor area ratio personally should be relative to footprint, not number of stories. We denied a property in onset over near the Marina, where Veronica... Because the guy wanted to build multiple stories, his single story would have been fine, but the minute he went up, the floor area ratio threw him out of the... So anyway, I'm done with my speech. As far as I'm concerned, our floor area ratio is kind of a poorly considered bylaw, and I would be willing to vote in giving relief on FAR.
Bro, Mr. Broddick, what's, how many square feet is the house you, you propose to build?
I don't, I don't have that exact number. The plan lists the percentages, but not the square footage.
The, Mr. Raquina says four-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-four.
Four-thousand-square-foot house?
Yep, four-two-two-four.
Big house.
Well, it's a fairly good-sized house, yeah, but most of it's not, a lot of it's not living space, I mean, it's a garage.
Now, without the garage, the house, it is forty-two?
I'd have to do, I don't have that on these. I'd have to do...
How many car garage?
Is that big?
What's that?
Two-car garage?
Two-car garage, yeah, but it takes in, I mean, it takes in the porch, it takes in all the stairs, exterior stairs, it takes, it takes in the...
Gross area, four-thousand gross, but the net area, the living, the living area...
Yes, right.
Again, that's why I'd be willing to grant relief, or I'd be inclined to.
Yeah, I've tried to design the house so it fits in with the neighborhood. The, the dormers, most of the houses in that neighborhood have pitched roofs with dormers on them. You know, the siding is going to be all reclaimed materials. The roof will be a metal roof, which is, again, recycled materials. So we're trying to do the right thing with the house.
Richard, what do you think? You okay with it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone in the public want to speak, in favor of this project?
Yes, we have several.
You guys all in favor? Can you just, just state your names? No, no, Mr. Reed, just state. Just state your name and just say in favor.
My name is Michael Carmon, I live at twenty-three Highland Road, across from my neighbors, and we're here in support of our neighbors.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Sir? Ma'am? Either one?
My name is Melissa Carmon, I live at twenty-three Highland Road, we are across the street, and we are in support of our neighbors.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, we're Emily and David Lunetta at twenty-eight Highland Road. We actually are, at some points on our property, fifty feet away from Bob and Deb. We have reviewed Bob and Deb's plans extensively. I think Dave saw them the first time, maybe about three years ago, and they've really worked really hard on these plans, and the, they're really going to add so much to the neighborhood and increase the home values. And the work that they're planning on doing is so environmentally friendly, and it pays homage to the really varied structures in the neighborhood. And also, you know, some of the things that they're doing, you know, upgrading the, the gas and electric, and, you know, they're in a trench, some, they had some of those plans too, were, they were really beneficial to us. And like I said, you know, I live fifty feet away, so, and both my husband and I are really, really looking forward to seeing what's going to go on twenty-six Highland Road. So we're here in unequivocal support for Bob and Deb.
All right, great. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? I hear none. I, I do agree with Jimmy about the FAR, that's horrible. We're trying to change it, so hopefully it changes soon, next town meeting. Chris, how you feel about the project?
Looks like a good project.
Did you, Mr. Chairman, did you just want to check and make sure there was no one opposed present?
We did, we opened it, asked for anybody.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Anyone who wants to oppose to the project, speak in opposition. I hear none. Thank you.
We're a good engineer, making sure that get on record, huh?
So, I just want to get on record, there was a, just a discussion, and I have something to say about the FAR, which I know this has been like a bit of an issue with our board. The floor area ratio controls density. And the, this, this particular project is a single-family home, which is very different from the prior building in onset, which was going to create, that additional floor area was going to allow it to become a two-family, which increased the density.
We know you were right.
Well, I want to be clear, because... So this is, this is a different situation. We also had a lot of opposition from neighbors from the past one. I don't like to, I mean, I think it's a good project, you have a lot of support from your neighbors, and I guess I'm just going to, that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, Jimmy, you good for it?
I only have one question, where are you going to live when, after you tear this house down?
My grandmother's house, down on...
Grandma's?
Yeah, yeah, down on...
Good, good old grandma.
Yeah, down on High Street.
Thank you. Go ahead, Richard, sorry.
You good?
Nope.
I enjoy listening to you, sir.
Must be moving with you while they're building the house.
I'm sure they'll take care of themselves, as he's at that age, you know?
Anything before we close?
No, sir.
All right, can I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor to close, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, discussion?
Aye.
Any discussion? None? Okay, motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented and grant relief on both articles of the bylaw.
Okay, I have a motion by Jim to grant a variance for the finding that the applicant has demonstrated hardship uniqueness, and that the project will not degrade from the intention of the bylaw, and the project is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and meet Mash General Laws forty-eight, forty-eight, section ten. Do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, it carries. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Boy, Manix, you to come do his presentation, huh? Have a good night, folks. Looks like a nice project.
I just feel bad for Mr. Manix.
Fifty-nine twenty-one coming up. Okay, let's get these in the folder, though.
And we got to sign those.
Am I the last one?
You're the last one.
I'll be quick. My hearing is very...
Which one are you here?
With the mask, it makes it worse?
All right, we'll be, we'll...
I apologize for asking you to repeat this.
We're going to try and speak in our microphone, so you can hear us.
If the, if the mask is, if the mask is hurting your hearing, you're wearing the mask wrong.
It's impossible.
Pass, unsigned.
This is the one we just did?
Yes.
And you wrote on it?
Uh-huh.
Thank you, Nazee. Sorry.
Chairman needs an assistant.
I didn't have such a damn long name, I could sign my name faster.
That's a nice house.
Surprised you remember how to spell it.
That's a nice house.
Surprised you remember how to spell it.
Let me try.
And I'm looking at the plans, quick.
I A.
We started off with the wrong letter, it's the very first letter.
Ah, it...
I'm keeping those plans, like the house.
Ecobachi.
Oh, ecob, oh.
Ecobachi.
E C C.
E A C O, ecobachi, B A C C I.
Did you get approved yet?
I haven't heard anything yet.
I was going to say, I know that face, but with the mask now.
He can't hear because the mask is blocking his hearing.
You need to follow up with them.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in a hurry, because they're really not in a hurry.
That's so true.
All right. Wait, wait, we just get this one out of the way, and I'll read that in for you. Anything else? Okay, this goes in here, too. We have a very mean secretary, and if we don't put things back right, you know, gives us bad files back, you know?
No, she beats Aaron.
Beats, poor Aaron.
So you got to make sure it's nicely nice for him tomorrow.
Fifty-nine twenty-one.
Yeah, I'm on my back to Monday.
Holy moly.
Oh, yeah, they get...
Sleeping.
They get veterans, they are.
Emotionally spent.
Yeah, tomorrow is a holiday.
You notice the engineer took off and the town planner took off, because he's getting an assistant here to put up with our foolishness.
It's only because he's younger.
Yeah.
Stay up later.
I think I did.
Okay, that's one for Richard.
We passed by bedtime.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on October twenty-seventh at six-thirty PM in room three-twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., zero-two-five-seven-one. To consider petition number fifty-nine dash twenty-one for a special permit from the requirements of Article Three, Section three-thirty, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Ann Rams of forty-one Wareham Lake Shore Drive, Shores Drive, Wareham, Mass., seeking to operate a home office at the subject property located at forty-one Wareham Lake Shores Drive, Wareham, Mass., assesses map one-twenty, lot ninety-five, in the R-one-thirty zoning district.
Okay, name and address, and tell us what you're doing.
I'm sorry?
Name and address.
Ann Rams, forty-one Wareham Lake Shore Drive, East Wareham, Massachusetts, oh-two-five-three-eight.
And sir, your name? Your name?
Name and address.
No, your name, your name.
Oh, my name?
You want us?
Ann Rams.
Okay, very well. Tell us what you're doing.
What are you doing? Oh, I have opened a new business that I conduct in Rochester, Massachusetts, over at East Over Farms. It's called Mounted Archery. It's teaching archery and horseback riding. But the entire business is conducted in Rochester. And I have a letter from the facility stating that fact.
Okay, so that's your office to do paperwork, right?
That's our office should do paperwork, yes. Me, a computer, and a phone.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. One line.
I'm going to put this into the record, to whom it may concern, Ann Rams currently boards her horse at our facility in Rochester, Mass. We have an agreement that she may use our facility at East Over Farm, one-thirty-one Hiller Road in Rochester, Mass., with her team to practice mounted archery and riding. We are not able to give her the office space that she needs, only the space for archery and equine activities. We look forward to helping her grow a unique equine sport. Thank you for your time. Please contact me directly if you have any questions. Jocelyn Mangilia, not signed, but typed written.
Sorry, printed off in email.
That's okay, doesn't have to, I just, you know, wanted it in the record.
Okay, Chris, what do you think?
Just using an innocent office, I really don't have a problem with it.[1780.66]
What's up with it?
I don't have a problem.
Okay.
Are you going to have any employees?
What did she say? No employees. What? Any employees. Oh, one at, in Rochester, yes.
Not in your office, okay.
Now, are you putting signs?
No.
No? Okay. Jimmy?
So, I'm going to let you get out of here. I've got a particular problem with the reason that you're here and it's not with you. But I understand probably what happened is you went to the town hall and you said, "I need a business certificate." And the clerk said, "Here, here's a piece of paper. Run around like a damn fool and get everybody in town to sign it." The fire department, the police department, the border health, the plumber, the electrician...
Because I live in an R130.
Pardon me? They call that form an R130.
Is that, it says...
Oh, you're zoning, yes, yes.
Office in the home you need a special permit.
Then you got to the building commissioner and he said, "I can't sign that. It's not an allowed use." And you had to pay $350 to come here tonight and ask us to make a decision.
A lot more than that, but okay.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understand that...
I had to pay to advertise in the newspaper. I had to pay the clerk the $50. Then I had to pay the building department something and then you. It's around $100.
Oh, you didn't pay us anything. I didn't get anything.
You're in for at least 500 bucks as a resident to get here tonight. To go sit on the back of a horse and shoot at targets like a wild Indian.
Listen, Rochester, just sit on my computer. Exactly.
Okay. That's all my questions. I'm fine with you having a home office. I pass any questions to the rest of the board.
Okay, Rich?
I don't have too many questions, other than the fact that I drove by the house today and you don't have any numbers on the front of your house. So, it makes it a little hard to distinguish between 41 and 42.
So, put a number on your house.
You need numbers on the front of your house and your neighbor should do it, too.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right.
But I mean, I think the town and the fire department do require you to have the number on the front of your house, so it's a good thing.
I'll take care of that tomorrow.
Pick a couple of them up and stick them right on there and you'll be good to go.
I'll take care of that tomorrow, sir.
Other than that, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone in the public want to speak in favor of this project?
Come on up, state your name and address, please. Well, he dressed a part in here. He's got some shorts on. I wish I wore shorts.
Name and address and...
Hey, I resembled, I remind.
Gary Swikowski, 15 Wareham Lake Shore Drive.
And are you in favor?
Yes, I have no problem with it. There's not going to be any traffic. There's not going to be anybody there. It's for tax purposes and the business purposes. Why not?
Needs a business certificate and they won't give it to her unless we say okay.
I mean...
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Anyone against? Okay, want to come forward?
She must have horses, too.
She's against.
Name and...
Kathleen Shannon, 1 Wareham Lake Shore Drive. I think I'm against, only because I'm not sure what would happen if the home was deemed that it was a business. And say it...
You speak right into the mic so we can hear you better.
I think that I'm opposed based on the fact that what would happen if the property ever changed hands? And it's in a residential district? And would that property retain a business permit?
It will return the same business permit. If so, the new owner, if they operate the same business, they could keep it.
What if they wanted to operate a different business?
No, they have to reapply.
It's a change of use.
All right, so it's not like somebody could open up and repair autos or... Fix machinery or something like that.
No, not in R130, no.
So...
You can't put in an application for a one-person office and then change it to a concrete manufacturing company. It doesn't work that way.
All right. So, it doesn't...
But if it happens to be the same exact what she does, it carries.
All right.
There's not a lot of people riding on the back of horses, shooting at pumpkins with an arrow.
No, but I don't know how it changed the zoning in the district. You know, it doesn't...
It doesn't change the zoning.
Doesn't...
If you want to speak, you've got to speak to the mic.
If it was a different owner, sorry, with a different use... Oh, Erin Shaheen, Assistant Town Planner. If it was a different owner and had different use, they would have to apply for another permit, go through the whole process. Unless, like Nazzy said, that it was the same exact thing that she's currently proposing, it would stay. But if the new owner with a different use, they'd have to do entire process, going through it, advertising, the whole entire, the whole nine.
So, nothing to worry about.
So, you would only approve the project for a home office and that's it?
We're only approving the special permit. The special permit is for the property, not for the lady. That's how it is. It's for the land, not for the person.
So, that house will always have a permit?
And she, it will always have a special permit recorded to do the same thing that she does.
Nothing different.
Not, nothing different. Like I said, it has to be...
Okay.
If anything different, it needs a different permit and then you'll be notified.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Anyone else?
No, you answered five questions.
I make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye.
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 I make a motion to approve.
I second.
Second.
Do we need to make a motion to call us a special permit or is it automatically...
I'll do the findings. We have a motion to grant by Jim with the findings that the applicant has demonstrated that the project has no substantial detriment to the neighborhood with the standard conditions. We only add one condition, that the applicant must put the house number on the house. Any other conditions because of special permit? And no signage, right?
No, sir.
And no, and second condition, no sign on the house, no signage. Okay, do I have a second on that?
I can't second my own.
I second.
Second by Rich. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstain, 500. Okay, you're good.
Now, before we adjourn tonight...
You're good. That's fast. Thank you. I told him you can leave.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You're welcome.
And have a nice veterans' day tomorrow, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you, sir.
I'm glad this was the last thing in front of us tonight.
Thank you.
I saw it on the back of your car.
I wanted to bring this up. And that's why I labored through what she had to go through to get here and what it cost her. It seems ridiculous to me that the way our bylaws work, that anybody that wants to open a business in Wareham goes to the town clerk and says, "I want a business certificate." And then they're going to run around like a chicken with their head cut off. That part doesn't bother me so much, but they... And nothing against Dave, don't get me wrong.
It's nothing for you if you don't want to stay?
No, I want to hear.
Ah, okay, sorry. You're welcome, you're welcome.
Then they're going to go spend several hundred dollars as a residential application and several thousand dollars as a commercial application. I'm...
And that's why we should be ready for them when they...
Yeah, we should be, but I think that we need to put a citizen's petition in because every time I put something in front of the planning board, they say, "Yeah, we'll do it," and then it changes and it doesn't happen. So, I'd like to compose a citizen's petition and I'm going to need 10 signatures to get it at the next town meeting. And my petition would be that when somebody wants to open a small business and have a home office and the building commissioner denies them, refuses to sign that paper, that those people be allowed to come in front of this board for no fee to the town and that this board make a decision and whether it be to give them relief or not to grant them relief. I just think it's punitive. Two 20-year-old girls want to clean the office at the Wareham Sewer Treatment Plant and they can't get a building, they can't get a business certificate without spending $500. They're going to make $15 an hour. They're going to work two hours a week. They're going to do this for a number of months. They're not going to make enough money to pay just to come here and we're restricting growth in this town. So, I'm just, I hope you guys get my point. And I'm going to draft something and I'm going to hope you all support it and let the town vote on it.
God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point well taken.
America, I like to hear.
There you go.
Thank you, thank you.
Have a good one.
Happy Veterans' Day.
How many people are running a home office without you guys knowing it? Or the town knowing it?
Only...
They did it right.
They did it right and they got punished for it.
Yep, I agree with that.
If you try to do things right in Massachusetts, you'll fail.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night, sir.
The home office is different, I think, than like running a business.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I don't know about that.
We got to make the... Did I sign?
Okay. I know that...
Well, if you want to make a petition, you have to prep it and get it passed to planning board.
I'll write it. I'm just asking you guys to get 10 signatures. I'm asking if you guys will support me on it.
We definitely will. I will.
I think it's ridiculous that people have to spend several hundred dollars to get in front of us for us to say, "Yeah, sure." And if they come here and we find it bad, then we can say no. But they shouldn't, it shouldn't cost them hundreds of dollars to do that.
No, we got a...
A thousand.
Actually, what the process, why aren't they starting at the building department to know whether or not they need to come before us?
Because they don't know. How many times...
No, but what I'm saying, why aren't they directed? Why aren't we directing them directly to the building department? Not to all these other offices to be signed, directly to the building department.
When I started my business, I went in and I saw, went to the assessors' office.
You're supposed to...
She handed me a piece of paper and said, "Go talk to the building commissioner." I went down, he looked, he said, "Yep, you're allowed to have it in there? Fine, sign off." That was how it went. When was that? How many years ago? Two years, three years ago. Well, you were very lucky because most people get a runaround. Well, it's because where I am, I can have an office in it. So, was that a cotton dry? It's an allowed use. Right.